Okay, I got two systems running. We're ready.
Okay, thank you already. Um, we haven't gotten the notice that it's being recorded. Do I need to wait for that? Where we consent to the recording? Or is that not coming?
No, I heard it.
Okay.
That was the Zoom recording.
Okay, okay.
It's like running. It is running, yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, January 26th, and this is the regular meeting of the Moraga Town Council. This is a teleconference meeting. To observe this meeting at the moment, live stream is not available. So to observe, but we will let you know if that changes. Uh, in the meantime, to observe and to make public comment, please use the Zoom link in the agenda via the town's website. You may also phone in using the phone number and the webinar ID on the agenda. If you want to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom or press star nine if you're on the phone. It's 6:32 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and because we're doing this by teleconference, I will take a roll call. Councilmember Macor.
Here.
Councilmember Onoda.
Here.
Councilmember McClure.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wolakki.
Here.
Mayor Sauce is here. Everyone is present. A quorum is present. Next, uh, agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, my pleasure. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, next special announcements, there are none. Uh, next item is proclamations and presentations. There are none. Next item is public comments and suggestion. This is time reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the town council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. The audience should be aware that the council cannot discuss the details or vote on non-agenda items. Your concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. So is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? I do not see any attendees. Um, am I missing anybody, Marty?
No, there is none.
Okay, and did we receive anything by email? Um, I, I know we received something from the chamber, but let's read that into public comments during discussion of the goals because that's what was specifically requested. Um, all right, no, nothing by email or, or letter. All right, uh, seeing no public comments and suggestions, I will close that item. Next item is adoption of the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to pull any of the consent items? Mike?
Yes, 6.2.
Okay. All right, any other items? Okay, may I have a motion for the items that were not pulled?
Move for approval of consent agenda items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4 as proposed.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Wolakki. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Onoda. Um, roll call vote, Councilmember Macor.
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolakki.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce, yes, it carries unanimously. Mike, you pulled 6.2.
Uh, yes, and I'm aware that, um, our staff council and Marty have both, um, looked at the question that was raised at the bottom of, uh, point seven. Um, and I went back and reviewed the whole thing. Uh, it, it's a little misleading that, um, the topic was mentioned three items earlier. They're on, they aren't mentioned in minutes. That's not important because the minutes are summaries, so that's not important to me. However, there is one item that is important. The second sentence at the bottom under Councilmember Sauce, it says, she offered a motion. A motion was not offered. She proposed to direct staff, so that would be my suggested change.
Mike, can you give us the page? This is page seven?
Page seven at the bottom.
Thank you.
Second sentence.
That sounds right to me. That's, that's what I recall, and thank you for going back to look at that. Um, is that acceptable to everybody? Okay, Mike, did you have any other changes?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, motion to approve agenda item 6.2 as amended.
Second.
Uh, Councilmember McClure motion, Councilmember Onoda second. Uh, is there any public comment on this item? Uh, seeing none. Um, all right, we'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Macor.
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolakki.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes, carries unanimously. Thank you for that. Um, next item is adoption of the meeting agenda. Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Motion by Councilmember McClure, second by Councilmember Macor. Uh, roll call vote, Councilmember Macor.
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda.
Yes.
Councilmember McClure.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wolakki.
Yes.
Mayor Sauce is a yes, unanimous adoption of the consent agenda. I mean, I'm sorry, the meeting agenda. All right, next item, reports. Um, Sona, would you kick us off, please?
Sure. Uh, so since our last council meeting, I attended the Canyon Bridge opening ceremony. It was, it was a real pleasure to see an awesome turnout and hear from all the speakers. And in addition, um, last week and continuing through this week, I have been participating virtually um, in the California League of Cities Academy for new council members. So the, the program provides training sessions on topics of local government and other salient issues facing many cities and towns like housing and fire safety. Um, so that's been really informative, um, as I've been able to join those virtually. And then finally, I've been gearing up and preparing for committee meetings, um, getting history and context about these committees that I will be a part of, including the La Mirinda School Bus Transportation Agency as well as the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Sona. Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also attended the amazing celebration on January 20th of the opening of the Canyon Bridge, and the past, um, city council, no, city manager said that he thought what kind of the title should be was the little train that could. And I, I thought that was just so perfect. I had to repeat that because that was such a grand celebration, especially for a little town. Um, great job, staff, and seeing Sean from the very beginning to the very end. You know, it was, it was a milestone for this town. Great job, everybody. Um, and then on the 21st, I met with, uh, Renata and also the community of, uh, Community Relations Person for Republic, and Republic, remember, is the person or is the company that has the garbage trucks. And they, like the rest of the United States, are having trouble hiring and, and keeping their, um, large vehicle truck drivers. And so they've done a few things that I think show that they're thinking out of the box a little bit. One was they had lunch for their truck drivers at restaurants that they service. And I thought that was just stellar. I, you know, to me, that warmed my heart. And then also they've given bonuses to some of the, to the truck drivers, you know, trying to keep them so we get our garbage picked up. Um, I'm working, and I didn't know whether to share this or not, but I decided, full transparency, here it is. I'm working, um, on a project that I accepted, um, speaking to the Sunrise Rotary as a Moraga resident. And rather than just going blah, 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 I decided to let other people do that. So I have, um, videoed without me in the picture at all, um, several people of the town and asked them to answer different questions. One is like, what do you love about Moraga? Or what, where do you take relatives that come to town? Or, you know, where's the special place in Moraga? And then we filmed it at those locations. And so it's just like maybe 10 people, um, and I think, you know, like two minutes max. Um, and I have a high school student at Campo that's editing it. And the Campo students, the film people have edited all of the art in public spaces, um, videos too. So anyway, full transparency, that's what I've been up to, and it has been an incredible pleasure. And if the town wants this when it's all done, I would be happy to share it. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful, wonderful. Um, Mike?
Yes, uh, thank you. And Teresa, that sounds just delightful. Um, I might have to go to that meeting to see it. Okay, and for me, yes, the Canyon Bridge opening, it was so well done. Um, so nice to see that, uh, finally completed. And, you know, my heart really goes out to the town of Canyon. Um, that was sort of their lifeline. They have people, kids in our schools, shop at our stores. And, um, again, I believe, uh, Councilmember Onoda was on the council at the time, but the temporary bridge, I, I remember as a resident, they did that really quick. I didn't usually say that. But anyway, so, um, for, for Canyon, uh, thank you for your patience. Um, and now we have this open and for the bike riders who want to go biking there, um, congratulations to all. Um, I've been in touch with our, uh, two schools, see how everybody's doing. Uh, first at Campo, talked to Principal, uh, John Walker, and he said, well, you know, COVID, um, you know, early January was giving us some challenges, but we're finding, uh, it's not as severe. Um, so people are recovering quicker and the teachers are able to deal with it, so we're not having any issues with the teachers' union, um, and they're moving forward and some of the efforts they're, you know, continue to make on diversity at Campolindo, uh, curriculum and updating, uh, some of their books. Um, so he said, you know, things, you know, sports wise, things are do, I told him, we gave him a plug for the girls' cross country team, winning the state championship, and he appreciated that. So, uh, all in all, things, um, seem to be going fairly well there. And then Julie Parks at the, uh, Moraga School District, again, she mentioned COVID, and, you know, they're dealing sort of in the, in the same way there. And she mentioned, uh, uh, some issues with their play fields relatively small, and I think she's mentioned them to the town manager. And if there's any way we could help to leverage on some of the maintenance items, and I'm sure, uh, town manager will help on that. And then, you know, I too have been trying to get up to speed on the CCTA board role, and I talked to the admin and, um, uh, the mayor was good enough to give me some, uh, prior information, so trying to read and, and catch up, so, um, that's very helpful. And, and thank you to, um, Amy Worth, who's invited me to a lunch tomorrow to sort of prep me. She's on the board. And give me a little background, and all new people should always want to be prepped, and I want to be prepped. So don't ask my usual dumb questions. End of report.
Thank, thank you, Mike. Hey, don't worry, I set precedent for asking dumb questions in County Connection, so you're, you're good. Uh, Vice Mayor Wolakki.
Thank you. Um, I also, uh, attended the very significant milestone ceremony for, uh, the Canyon Bridge. Uh, I echo all the positive comments of my fellow council members. Um, I've also been, uh, following some goings ons at MOFD. Uh, they are in the middle, uh, for your information, of redistricting. And as you may know, there are five districts in MOFD, and Moraga is primarily in districts one and two. There was the census, and, uh, there is a California law requiring redistricting, taking that consensus, uh, uh, into account. Where the, in that consensus, the census. And the objective is to be able to balance the distribution of citizens. Um, and this was first, uh, addressed on January 19th. Um, and they are actually holding a, uh, special meeting tonight to progress that. Uh, on the 19th, basically, criteria was set tonight. They're looking at the, the draft results. Um, it looks like it's going to be just massaging, uh, not significant changes to the, the districts, uh, for Moraga and Arinda. Um, and it needs to be done by April 17th. Also, follow on, follow on from, um, last meeting, uh, our last town council meeting. The, uh, there is a meeting going to be arranged in the next month, uh, to two months. Uh, covering really two subjects now, one being, uh, the Tunnel and East Bay Fire Break. Uh, that project. And secondly, it'll be an opportunity for us to interact with, uh, the, uh, uh, management of Moraga Fire, uh, Margar into fire, uh, on preseason, uh, pre-fire season planning. So, um, we'll see if that, there's anything, any actions that we, the town council, need to, uh, be aware of and take, take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, uh, I'll keep my comments short. The, um, I went on January 14th to the Moraga Liaison Meeting, which is just a terrific meeting because it's just wonderful to sit, well, in a Zoom room, uh, with all of these groups in the community that are working so hard and diligently to make this an even better place than, than it already is. Um, my, the one takeaway I wanted to share, and it's consistent with what Mike reported in his report, is that, um, both Julie Parks from the Moraga School District and John Nickerson from AUHSD, um, were unified in, in saying that they're doing everything they can to keep kids in school safely. They're doing everything they can to get kids who have to be out of school, back to school safely and as soon as possible. And that there's some disappointment in the governor's budget that despite, uh, lots of, uh, statements in support of public education, uh, the view, at least of John Nickerson, was that the budget does not back those statements, so there's going to be some, some work and lobbying going on around that, but that also points to the importance of, of this community continuing to support MEF. Um, I also attended the opening ceremony of the bridge. I, I just echo the comments of my fellow council members about what a, what a terrific day that was, and what a happy event. And then, um, just further to Teresa's note about the Republic Services, a driver shortage, that seems to be an issue at other agencies, including County Connection, which is seeing driver numbers, um, that are lower than they would like, and it is impacting the ability to run certain routes. The one agency that, to date, although Sona may learn differently on Friday at the board meeting, that has been immune from this is the School Bus Authority, uh, because, um, the, both the School Bus Authority and for a student, which is the school bus operator, did a good job of, in partnership, keeping drivers through the pandemic and providing incentives for them to come back because the, the turnover in, in that, on the bus, school bus routes is particularly difficult to, to manage. So, um, kudos to them, and, and hopefully that, that will continue, and that is the end of my report. All right, Cynthia?
Yes, hello. Um, I wanted to share with everybody that, um, we are still accepting applications for boards and commissions, and please get out there and encourage people to attend. That will be closing in the next week. Um, and we had a fantastic meeting with the Bullinger Canyon Neighborhood and the property owners yesterday. Uh, a little preview of some of the work that's going on to, uh, zone the Bullinger Canyon Special Study Area. I know I forwarded you that, um, PowerPoint, and I believe it's on the town's website on our, um, Make Moraga homepage, and that will be coming to you. There's actually a report, a detailed white paper that will go out with the staff report, and it's coming to the council for discussion on February 9th, but we got really great, um, feedback. I think 38 people attended, so that's fantastic. Um, wow, I don't know if any of you have been to the hacienda, and if you haven't, don't go because it's just totally under construction. Like, you can't get in the walkways, you have to like, enter through La Salla and then go in the back door through Jasmine's office. Everything is being done. The patio, Wedgwood's doing work, they're starting on the kitchen. I guess they went out there PG&E and decided to, you know, big, bring their boom truck and cut a tree down. We've got, we had a gas, like, I mean, it just goes on and on. It's just crazy and pandemonium. So, we will hopefully be having a reception in a couple of months and welcoming Wedgwood and introducing Wedgwood in the neighborhoods. And I think everything will be pretty then, but for now, it's chaos and pandemonium. But Brianna has it all under control as she always does. Um, and I believe that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Cynthia. Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Cynthia, I've got a question. Is, are we able to listen to the residents who had questions or comments at the Bullinger meeting?
You know, unfortunately, there were issues with recording that community meeting, so we did, I took copious notes. Afshad took notes. I believe that Mio took notes, so we're compiling that and we will be reporting that out. So sorry, I think I had told some of you that, that it would be recorded, but it was not recorded. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got great feedback, though. Like I said, we'll share it.
All right, any other questions of, of Cynthia? Um, all right, so that, we're done with that agenda item. Um, hey, Marty, are we still, um, in the same spot? Is live stream still not available?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, IT is on their way here to see if they can fix it in person, but that'll be about a 30-minute wait.
Okay, but have we posted something on the website about plugging into Zoom?
She has left here and gone back to the town offices to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for, for, uh, attending to that. All right, next agenda item, ordinances, resolutions, and requests for action, item 10A, Town Council Goals for 2022. Um, I, I'll set the table for this, and then, uh, Steve, I invite you to, to add, uh, subtract, or modify, um, anything I said before we proceed. Um, so as, as everyone knows, we, we do goal setting at the start of, of every calendar year, and it's an opportunity for us to step back and with community input, consider what the town's priorities are for the coming year. And we do this because resources are limited and needs and expectations are high. So the goals for 2022 will guide the town manager and her staff in prioritizing where investments should be made, where ta, where staff time should be spent, and what projects should be pursued and completed. Our goals should identify where public funds and staff resources should be focused without prescribing or dictating how staff should make those goals happen. Our goals are also used as a yardstick against which the council measures its accomplishments at the end of the year and against which the town manager's performance is assessed during the annual performance evaluation. Some goals may take longer than a year, others are carryovers from prior years. And if something is not a goal, it doesn't mean it won't get done during the year. So I wanted to also just give a word about the process behind the draft that, uh, the Vice Mayor and I have placed before you tonight for your consideration. We looked at last year's goals and carried over what was still relevant and/or in progress. We took into account fiscal responsibility, financial means, and staff resources. We separated the nice-to-haves from the must-haves, paying particular attention to public safety, infrastructure, capital improvement, roads, storm drains, and planning for the future of the town. And we considered the public input that we have received, both in public meetings and outside of public forums. And we tried to draft the goals in a way that we, um, believe communicate priority areas without getting prescriptive or in the weeds about the plans, programs, or techniques that would lead to the achievement of the goals. So, um, the, the, the process for, um, oh, Steve, I'm sorry, did you want to add or, or subtract anything from what I've said?
No, thank you very much for, um, Mayor Sauce, thank you very much for including me in the process. And, uh, now you, you're representing, uh, the, uh, results very well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, um, the, the way, um, I would propose that we, that we go about this is as, as is standard to first entertain questions from council members, then open up for public comment on this agenda item. And then bring it back for discussion, and, um, what I propose to do is to first ask each council member if there are any goals that they want to change or remove from the draft. And then, based on that, we can, as we do with consent items, we can set aside the ones that are agreeable as written. Then, um, I would propose we discuss each of the goals that has been flagged by a council member. And after we've reached agreement on the goals that have been flagged for elimination or amendment, I'll ask council members to bring up any goals that they would like us to consider adding. And if that process at any point in time doesn't make sense or is not yielding inefficient and productive and thorough and transparent meeting, we'll pivot and adapt, but, um, I, I would love to set it up that way, just so, um, we can have a structure around which to work. Um, and I, my hope, and I know all of our hope, is that we can finish tonight so that, uh, going forward, we can go about the business of, of actually meeting the goals that, that we set. So, um, with that, I want to open up first to questions from council members. Mike?
Um, could we talk about the process if we have?
Sure.
Yeah, so, um, I think it would be helpful because this is intended to be all five people bringing goals to the meeting, not just one or two, just in case it wasn't clear. So I think it'd be great, um, as we did last year, for all council members, if you want to present a goal, present a goal. Um, if you want to, um, wait, you can wait. I think that's helpful because when you open it up for public comment, I think public comment should be able to understand everything that's being presented, not just, um, the, the two of you in which you're presenting. So I would suggest that as a potential modification.
So I, you're suggesting, Mike, that, that the, what I put as last goes first?
Pretty much. Not first, not first, but for, for you to go through the goals you and Steve put, that's great, and questions, that makes sense. Then maybe perhaps the other council members, if any, let them present their goals and let, if there's any questions, afford them the same opportunity. So this should be, uh, you know, us as equals, right? The mayor leads us through the process, but we all have an equal opportunity to suggest goals and take questions. That's just, um, I, I think something that would work, and then we get public comment on what everybody's suggested.
Uh, the, the alternative is that I open it up to public comment a second time after we follow process. They, I mean, Mike, I, I think this is collaborative. I agree. This has, this is all five of us. And the reason that the draft is presented is to, to create a starting point so that we have something to, to start to react to rather than inventing things from whole cloth. So, um, my, my suggestion would be to, after there is, um, discussion of the, of, of additional goals, uh, that I read, that I open public comment first on what isn't in front of everyone. And then we open it a second time to, uh, after, if there are new goals that have been introduced.
Okay.
But is it?
Yeah, hi, Steve.
I mean, uh, Renata, is, is there a particular reason not to surface all the options upfront? Is it just a, a question of concern that we'd have too many, or?
Well, Mike, how many do you have?
I have, uh, seven.
Additional ones?
Well, some are additions to existing go, actually, most are additions to existing goals and one new goal.
Okay, so, so under, under the, the, the rubric that I put forward, you would have an opportunity to pull the ones that you want to add stuff to, right?
Right.
And that's done at the beginning, and then the one additional one, if it, if it's, does anyone else have additional ones? Okay, so we're talking about one. Okay, well then, um.
I can, the, the one new one can wait, you know, that's.
Is that, is that okay?
That, that's fine.
Okay, and, but then you would, you would have the opportunity, again, I, I'm not wedded to the process, I'm just trying to, to move this along, uh, in a way that, that we can get through this. Um, uh, Steve, are you agreeable to, to doing it that way, or do you?
Sure.
Do you have an alternative?
No, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, okay. Um, all right, so what I will do, like, any other questions? From, from council members? Okay, all right, Mike, thank you for your, for your suggestions. I really appreciate you thinking about the process. Um, the, um, I will therefore open it to public comment. Is there, are there any members of the public in attendance? of the public in attendance who wish to comment on the goal-setting agenda item at this point? Again, understanding we will have a second public comment period at the end. Okay, I see none. Cynthia, my understanding is that we have a written comment from the chamber that the chamber has asked us to read into the record. If I do the timing of three minutes, would you be willing to read whatever you can in three minutes? And you're on mute. And, and council members, you've all received the full text of this letter.
Hey. We are asking the town of Moraga to support the economic recovery, recovery of small business and support economic development partner, Moraga Chamber of Commerce, through the allocation of ARPA funds. The chamber seeks ways to make it easier, more pleasant, and more efficient for people to stay and work or spend money in Moraga. The nonprofit chamber has informally served as an economic development partner and advocate for Moraga's business community. In addition to serving its member base, the chamber also produces many community events that promote the town of Moraga, engages the community, and increases economic vitality, which in turn adds, aids the town through business, sales, tax proceeds. Grants. The chamber is keen to explore ways to not only support businesses through a difficult time, but to advance businesses in this new climate. Based on feedback from neighboring cities, as well as those around the county, the chamber has already begun the process to survey the business community to learn where they need the most help. We advocate for another round of funding to support local business. The chamber is ready to work with the town to develop criteria and administer programs to help businesses with concerns such as hiring challenges with staffing retention, transportation, and determining pay rate. CRM systems, point-of-sale, electronic keying, security and infrastructure technology. Outdoor seating, not only in restaurants, but also eating meeting space for professionals. Interior upgrades for lighting, flow, customer service, safety, seating, energy efficiency, et cetera. Programs. Our 2022 direction is to begin building back strong and to focus on ways to form bonds between our businesses, finding opportunities to help one another while also seeking ways to drive foot traffic. We plan to explore events and outreach ideas such as job fair, summer job fair, art walk, First Friday, diversity, give-back opportunities involving the community, and identify leadership and service opportunities for youth organizations. We would like to support businesses immediately with programs such as shop local gift cards, assistance applying for COVID-19 relief, PFP, EIDL, venue grants, restaurant revitalization, et cetera. Technical seminars, speaker series on taxes, marketing, HR, legal, et cetera. Small business resources, one-on-one consulting. Chamber support. A healthy chamber is an additional arm for the town. The chamber maintains a presence on social media.
Cynthia.
Okay. Oh, publicizing and marketing Mar, Maraga events on Facebook and the chamber website, including its community calendar. The chamber is also a conduit, conduit for relations with St. Mary's College and its student bodies' needs in the community. Due to the pandemic, loss of memberships, events cancellation, and staff reductions, nearly one year without an executive director, the chamber has seen a significant loss of reserves and a limitation in its outreachability. An infusion.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing no hands. Marty, you see anybody that I need to be aware of?
No, no hands.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. So again, we'll do public comment again at the end of our discussion. So now I will close this public comment opportunity, and we will open it up for council discussion. So again, I, I'd like to go around the horn and see which of the draft goals that are presented for everyone's consideration tonight, folks would like to either change or eliminate. And so, Mike, can you, would you, do you mind going first since you have kindly gone, have some suggestions and let it, let, let us know which ones you're looking to amend?
Okay, the, the first goal, efficiency, right? I have a question. I saw, I guess it's an amendment. The third goal, complete work on the permanent canyon bridge.
Okay.
The next three on that page are fine. Going to page three. First one's fine. I have a question on the second one.
Okay.
Of parks. I have an addition on the third one.
I'm sorry, the Paulus one?
The Paulus. I have an addition on the fourth one, traffic safety. I have an addition on the next one, town communications. The next two are fine. Oh, no, I do have a, a, a question in addition on the diversity inclusion. And I have a suggested addition on the last one with the Moraga business climate.
Um, okay. Does anyone, do any other council members have ones they would like to pull? Teresa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple that Mike also mentioned. On page three, line six, which is the second one down the page, also the third one down the page.
Okay. Okay. Sona?
Yeah, the two, there's two that are calling out to me that I wanted to talk, talk more about. That is page three, line 14, about town communications.
Okay.
And then line 23 regarding the business climate.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Negative. I'm good.
Uh, a, as am I. So if I, if I have this, yes, Cynthia?
Um, I would like to recommend a small edit to the second bullet on the six cyclical housing element. It has in parentheses, including the Bullinger Valley Special Study Area. And it's been made clear to us that it's actually the Bullinger Canyon Special Study Area. So we'd like to clean that up in this, in your goals.
Okay, so thank you, Cynthia. I, I was, I was supposed to mention that and I neglected to. All right. So if I have this correctly, goal two on the advanced planning initiative, goal four on worst first, goal five on storm drains, goal six on ARPA, goal, goal seven on public safety, and goal 12 on town's impact on the environment. Those are all acceptable as, as drafted?
I'm trying, I, I think you're going to ask me to pull up the written numbers, and I didn't have a number. Could you say the numbers one more time just so I can do that more efficiently?
It's the, the second one on the housing element. Uh, fourth goal on worst first, fifth goal on storm drains, sixth goal on ARPA, seven on public safety, and 12 on environment. Those are all advancing without edits.
Got it.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right. So with that, let's go to goal number one, efficiently sustain corporations. Mike, you would like to propose some, some changes?
Yes, and I'd like to give some context. Again, on process, is that okay? Because I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's discussion time.
Right, okay. This will be a little long. So the, the goal I'd like to add is as follows. Develop of, and, and I have these in writing, which can be presented if anybody would like it. Develop a financial plan to fund unfunded needs, prevent storm drains, required asset replacement, and pension liability, and to prevent, on an ongoing basis, given substantial available funding, and eliminate Moraga's structural deficit. Additionally, include developing a policy memorializing the quote intention, end quote, of utilizing Paulus Colorado's and Measure K funding versus the current informal, verbal, undocumented approach. So that's the formal add I'd like to make to the first one. And then in terms of.
Mike, I'm sorry. May, may I interrupt? I apologize because I'm, I'm not following. You want to add, you want to replace the first one with that? Or you want to add that language to the first one?
Well, I'm open either way. The, the first one, just for my comments on that, it, it, there's nothing wrong with the goal, but sort of a generic goal that you could have for every year. And to me, when, and, and I understand this process is done different ways by different mayors. But we have goals and then we have the priorities. So what goals rise to our priority on the town council, like traffic safety did last year? John King does traffic safety every year, but last year we said the council, it should rise to a council priority. So when I think of these, I say, well, so what is the priority? Which to me is either an issue or an opportunity. So to me, the, the issue here on the first one is really the funding of our unfunded needs. You know, that's the issue. And, and, you know, I'll have a hard time supporting without that called out because that's really what we need to focus on. And then the second item is we have these informal policies around millions and millions of available dollars. And I, I'm just really uncomfortable about that. And I'm not talking about anything complicated. You know, a, a one-pager to just memorialize that informal policy. So we have something, not to lock people in, not a restriction, not to handcuff people, but when we have new people like Sona comes in, oh, Sona, here, here's the policy on Measure K. I think it's just helpful versus our verbal approach.
May I ask a question, Mike?
Sure.
So we have as separate and distinct goals, allocate the Moraga ARPA grant funding to the higher priority needs and implementing corresponding plans. And that was agreed to by, by all of us. And then we also have one that we are going to talk about, the, the one that specifically speaks to the process for identifying and prioritizing the use of restricted and unassigned Paulus Colorado's funds. And does that, do those two not address some of what you just read?
No, they do not.
Okay.
And, and I have a suggested change on the, the Paulus funds. I would think of that differently. So. See, the, tho, those are sort of specific one-offs. And at the end of the day, we still don't have a plan to eliminate our unfunded needs, and we have the opportunity. And that's what's so key here to me. And I have more comments on context, but I'll take questions.
Or, or comments from, from council members? Sona?
Yeah, I just wanted to better understand Councilmember McClair's point about policies, because I do think that that does sound pretty useful. But I'm trying to kind of have you elaborate to understand where you see that being necessary as like a broad swath at any time we, you know, have, make a decision, there should be a one-page or policy that is associated with it? Or you referring, are you only saying that's necessary in, for some specific things like Measure K?
Yeah, that's why I wish I could have handed out my goals because then that would be clear. No, it's specifically on two items, Measure K and Paulus Colorado's. And what's confusing here, just like what we have in the staff report, Paulus is unrestricted. Well, technically, yes. And Measure K is technically unrestricted, correct? But the mayor at the time told me, well, Measure K, Mike, the consultant said we couldn't get a specific tax approved with two-thirds of the vote. So we went for the general tax, which is for every, anything, which was 50% of the vote. He said, that's the only reason we did that. But the intention of Measure K, he said, Mike, everybody knew that was about roads and infrastructure. And Roger Weichel was on the council, and he reminded us it's for roads and infrastructure. And, and, you know, to just pass that on informally, the intention versus not having it just memorialized on a single piece of paper, I think is risky. And Paulus, we have an agreement between Richfield and the town manager of Moraga that says we agreed $14 million will be used for parks, recreation, and open space. That's in writing. So that's a clear intention as well as development impact fees. So because the, you know, the formal technical issue says one thing, and then the intention says something else, I, I think that's really important. And, and there's millions of dollars behind it. So i, if you don't, you know, the next council or the council thereafter or in eight years, they'll come in and who knows how it's going to get spent.
Teresa?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mike, I, I completely agree that that is something that needs to be on a piece of paper and the history behind it and, and everything. I completely concur. But what I question is that the, the goal number one, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't look like that's the place for it to be. And not to say that it shouldn't be somewhere. I just questioned that, if that's the right place. So i, it's possible that we might want to move on to other ones and come circle back to see if that is addressed in some of the other goals. I mean, it's just an idea.
And, and that's fair, and if I may respond, and I thought of it. And for example, Measure K is connected to my first goal of a financial plan. So that's one of the reasons to put it there. And I figured, well, while we're doing Measure K, let's do Paulus. So, but that could be separated out. So.
Steve, do you have any comments?
Well, I always got a comment that a lot of this information is actually communicated annually in the, in the updated budget. You know, each of the funds are, are, well, Mike, you're shaking, shaking it, no. And maybe it's not to the degree that you want, but, you know, the funds are all defined there. And, and so I, I I see a lot of detail thrown into one bullet here, Mike, and I'm, I'm concerned. And I, I really can't even digest it without seeing the whole, it in writing, to be honest with you.
Yeah. And, and I have it in writing, and, and that could be shared. Just so I understand, Vice Mayor, are you referring to my first bullet of developing a financial plan? Or are you referring to Measure K and Paulus?
Well, Measure K and Paulus are, are, are two funds in the budget that are defined in the budget.
Correct. And that's not what I'm suggesting. And those two, I'm just suggesting we take this un, um, verbal intention and memorialize it. Okay, the first point says, you know, the unfunded needs, how much money do we need for storm drains? And how much money do we need for asset replacement and pension on an ongoing basis? And what's the plan to fund those three items? We don't have a plan. And that's the point.
Steve, do you have any other comments?
I, I, obviously, I'm okay with the first bullet as it is.
As, as am I. I, I guess, here's my concern. There, there's multiple things, Mike, that you raised that, that give me a pause. One is it's results-driven. And that, again, we, we set goals. We don't dictate results. Second, it's tactical. Third, it's, it binds the hands of future councils. Yes, future councils could do things differently than we do, but that's the prerogative of the voters, to elect people who might want to do things differently. And I, I, I am not in favor of being so prescriptive that we tie the hands of future councils in ways that do not give the future council the opportunity to make the best decision they want, they think, is best for the town based on the facts and circumstances. So I'm fine with one as, as, as it is.
Are you referring to the financial plan that I'm suggesting? Or are you referring to memorializing the intention of Paulus and Measure K?
Yes, and, and, and other stuff. I mean, there was just a lot of, there was a lot of program, programmatic, tactical, results-oriented stuff that, that, that in my, my personal view is they don't belong in the goals.
Yeah. And, and just for, for my opinion, the first one, which is to develop a. Yeah, and and just for for my opinion, um, the first one, which is to develop a final plan of. Financial plan for unfunded needs is setting policy and direction. We're giving direction to staff. We want to develop a financial plan that will fund unfunded needs. And we have funding like we've never had before. So that is direction. So I would agree to disagree with you. And tying the hands, the, you know, the 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 idea of of what we're doing today informally and just put it in writing. And and I can share with you a conversation I had with Norm. I missed his party on Friday. And the town manager said, well, you can see him Monday or Tuesday. So we got together and. You know, we talked about family and other stuff, but he was telling me his ideas about issues that we had out there. And he said, now. What's your idea again, Mike, on Measure K? You want to restrict it? I said, I don't want to restrict it. I just want to take the informal policy that we've been following for ten years now and and just put it on a piece of paper. Not to tie the hands, but just to do a policy. He said, oh, you want to memorialize the informal policy? I said, yes. He said, oh, well, that makes sense. Now I get it. So you know, some of these you have to talk out and I I'm not sure we're actually doing the right process here. But um, that's all that says. So the the the, if there's a sense we're tying hands, we're not. We're just saying. Here's a, here's the, whether you say it verbally or whether you say it on a one page piece of paper. Here's our policy in Measure K. If a future council wants to spend it on, you know, vacation. For somebody, go right ahead. They can do whatever they want and then the voters will do what they want. But so it doesn't tie them, it informs them. So Sona comes on our council. It informs her versus five people trying to, oh, Sona, here's the verbal way we use these funds. You'll get five different points of view. I just think as people who set policy. We don't have a policy that's in writing. We have a policy that's verbal. So I respectfully agree to disagree.
Yeah, so we we don't have, we we don't have um unanimity on 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 this one. Teresa?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I I really appreciate this conversation. I, you know, I appreciate what everyone has brought to this table. And I I definitely can see what Mike's talking about. And understand the the validity of having something written down so that. Um, whoever wants to see the history behind any of these, especially the where there's money. You you know, there should be a source that people can can view. So I would be in favor of. Of having that written down somewhere and not saying that that we're, you know, we're. Going with whatever, but I think there should be a conversation. This is a lot of money. But I think that we might be talking about this in one of the other bullet points. So I would be willing to circle back and see if if. Mike's concerns are are still current at the end.
Okay, why don't we um? Let's, let's table this one, okay? Because we have some more. This one is general and it's it's mostly a carryover from last year. Um, and let's, let's see if some of these concerns are addressed with the other ones and we'll and we'll circle back. Is that acceptable? Okay, all right, um. Okay, the bridge. Mike, you had some comments on that?
Yeah, yeah, and actually just questions here. So um, we just reopened the bridge. I know there's some additional cosmetic work to do, but what is the major priority on the canyon bridge for next year?
It's to complete the 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 work, which is um largely at this point. You know, railings and that sort of thing. And and to make sure that we timely secure the reimbursements. That are are owed to us.
Right, whi- which is pretty straightforward, right?
Cynthia?
And then we continue to work with East Bay Med on phase two of their project and we continue to advocate with the regional park district for the restoration. Of the Lafayette Maraga Trail.
Mike, are you, are you suggesting we not have this as a goal?
Uh, again, you know, this document's not to put all goes down, it's to put what goals rise to a priority. So for me, I know there's additional work to do, but I think the big priority is getting it open. Um, has been accomplished. So I I think every, everything you want to do is good. I just don't think it rises to this level.
I, the question I have um. This for press or Cynthia is, is is this a major, a continuing major project uh for twenty twenty two, or is it more on the lower end?
Oh, yeah, it's a huge project still. I mean, I was, I was just gonna ask. Sean, how much money we're still owed? Because when we send those reimbursements to Caltrans. We've gotten it kind of down now, so we do it. But remember, each reimbursement is two feet high of paper with all the documentation. And we still have to do all that documentation and close out. In fact, some of that work might not be completed this calendar year. But I think it's still some heavy lifting for public works. So, but Sean's here and he'll chime in.
Yeah, yes, we do have a number of things that still need to be completed, including a five year monitoring of the restoration that we're gonna do for the. Uh remediation of removing, you know, vegetation trees and and affecting the creek. And so. And all that has to keep, continue to go through a federal process, which is, you know, daunting and takes a lot of time. And so. Why we push really hard to get the bridge open, that was the the biggest and best and and most important goal. And we delivered on that. Um, there is still some work to be done and it does take, you know, significant time. Uh, from staff and but we get reimbursed for that time also. So um. It it is an important goal and we'll have somebody, you know, working part time on that. As one of their uh primary uh tasks for the year.
I'm, I I I profess, I'm a little bit torn on this and I I got, I I gotta preface this by saying I hate paperwork. Uh, so, you know, I I see that, you know, stuff happening out in the field and I I can see that as being. A a significant uh goal to to highlight. Um, there's some other goals and so I I. I can go either way on this one, actually. Huge, huge, huge milestone to get it uh finished. It'd be another big milestone to be able to look out from the. From that uh bench and look at a nice, nice scene and not something that looks like the Panama Canal, you know. They they they, when they dug the canal, but, you know, I'm I'm happy either way.
Teresa?
Uh, thank you. Uh, um, I can see how important this is. Um, and what it's still a big project it is, because if you look at where the path used to be, it's not there. And you know, that landslide, in fact, there were two landslides, as I recall, maybe I'm wrong on this. You know, it still has a long ways to go before people can ride their bicycles on that path and hook up with Vista.
Bella Vista.
Bella Vista, thank you. You're not, yeah, that's right, Bella Vista. Um, so I I think that this still is a major project. And it, I give it a thumbs up.
Sona?
I'm sort of, yeah, I'm sort of with Steve that I can go either way on that. Um, I mean, hearing that there's still needs. That there still needs to be a fair amount of um investment and time. Then um, I say we just, you know. Take what staff is saying that this is still an important and big investment, so let's keep it.
Yeah, and that that that's where I am. I mean, we're hearing from Sean that there's still a significant amount of work to do. I mean, the the five year plan. For uh the environmental remediation is important and it sounds like there's a lot of staff time and a lot of dollars. Still at stake. So I think just comparing it to the scope of the other stuff that we're doing and it it is as. If not more significant than some of these other goals, so I would be in favor of keeping them. Do we have, um, so we have uh. Two on the fences and Mike, where where are you on this now?
I I'll go, I'll go on.
Okay, so are are we good on this one just to leave it? Thumbs up? Oh, I love thumbs up votes. Okay, great. Um, so that's that. All right. Four, five and six and seven are not up for discussion. Okay, Mike and Teresa. You both wanted to talk about uh number eight, maintain the town's parks, open space and facilities for the benefit of the public. Who would like to go first? Teresa, why don't you go first?
Okay, thank you. Um, actually, my, my thoughts on this aren't that big. But um, if you look at the sentence and compare it to the, to the number up above. The one up above says maintain and improve public safety. And and this one says maintain. Um, it doesn't say improve, it doesn't say enhance, just maintain. And to me, I mean, that's a no brainer. That's, you know, like picking up the trash, but to maintain and improve would reflect. The one up above, and I think that's where we're at this year. And I understand that this is a complete copy and paste from last year. And last year, that made sense. This year, I think we're on a different tier. So I would be in favor of putting maintain and improve. The town's parks, open space and facilities for the benefit of the public.
What about, how would you feel about just saying enhance?
Um, I would be.
Enhance the town's parks, open space.
Beautiful.
Okay, would that be agreeable? Well, I, we still have Mike. Mike, what what did you want to say on this one? Is it, was that it, Teresa? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. Okay.
Yeah, I I had the same reaction, which to me, maintain, this sounds like one of our standard goals. And I'd say. Because Brianna and staff does such a good job, why does it rise to a priority? We're we're doing good. The the issue I had and um, I had this actually for the next section, but. The the goal to me that's in front of us is um. Our rec, what are the recreational priorities in our town as defined by residents? That's the one that, you know, I I don't know um.
But that's, I think that's the next one, Mike.
Okay, I I know. I I'm just saying, but but it ties into, if you're gonna enhance parks and open space, those are recreational items. So. There's a little bit of a a a tie in, but I would be comfortable with um enhancing that. I just didn't want to leave maintain it. Look like to a a good goal, but it's a goal like many others, you know, finish the audit.
Fair points. Cynthia?
I just wanted to say that you all should take a moment to acknowledge how far you've come. Because two or three years ago, we were struggling with, how are we gonna fund our asset replacement? And how are we gonna simply maintain the parks, open space and facilities? And here we are three years later and we're like, oh man, we can do more. So kudos to you. Great job.
All right, so if we, thank you. So if we say enhance, are are we, do we have thumbs up from everybody? Yes, Mike.
So when we say enhance, that usually means we're gonna do something. I mean, do we know? Because you don't want to say enhance and the year comes and, you know, we really didn't enhance, we maintained. So is there an idea here that?
We do.
Some plots.
We do have multiple enhancement projects. We have the improvements to the picnic areas and the ADA picnic areas. We have the ADA restrooms. We have, Brianna will tell us more. I don't know.
We have the irrigate, we have the irrigation system in the commons.
Yeah, we're doing all the improvements at the Hacienda. So there's a lot that's going on at our facilities and, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right, do we have thumbs up all around to keep to with enhance? Beautiful. Okay, moving on to the next one. Um. This is Mike and Teresa. Mike, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I I just think of what is the goal as something different. So this is framing the the goal around identifying and prioritizing uses for. Unrestricted and honest Palo's funds. See, to me, there's the goal and there's the funding. So the big goal in front of us for the town that goes beyond Palo's is what recreational. Opportunities do our residents want? Engage them and get some kind of a priority sense. Because that's what I hear about all the time, which is the sports field, the community center, the park, the. Um, a a painted rock um access and and the list goes on and and Harvey opens space. The list goes on and on and and on. And that's what I think the goal is. The the Palo's funds will follow that discussion. Once we understand what the residents want, then that's where we use the Palo's goals. And once again, I'm uncomfortable. When I get a staff report and it says Palo's is unrestricted. And for a little background, we are owed seventeen million dollars from Palo's. We've received six million dollars. Um, less than half of that's gone towards recreation. Okay, and we have the letter, the agreement that says parks, recreation, open space and a relatively small amount for development impact fee. So um, there is an intention behind that for recreation. It's not just anything. So that makes me really uncomfortable to see it sort of a side issue, but I think the goal here is. What are the recreational opportunities in this town as defined by residents? So I would switch it like that.
Um, yeah, I know Sona wants to comment on this. Teresa wants to comment on this. Steve's raising his hand. So Steve, is it all right if I go to Sona?
Oh, absolutely. It's mine is to to try to provide some uh basis for.
Basis, yeah, okay. Sona?
Uh, no, actually, I I wanted to talk about a different one, not this one. I want to hear the other one else's. That's okay.
Okay, uh, Teresa?
Thank you. And and Mike, what I'm proposing might address your concerns. And I'm proposing what the town staff proposed last time. And for some reason, it it got, it didn't make it to this piece of paper. But I think. Um, on the town staff report, let me, I guess, let me just read this and I'll tell you when I'm including the staff. Staff report. So it says, with public input, develop and initiate a process for identifying and prioritizing uses. For unrestricted and unassigned Palo's Colorado's funds. Okay, so here comes the town staff report. Including consideration of a townwide recreation and open space plan. So I think that addresses Mike's concerns and it brings in um. Information that the town has already kind of made a plan for, you know, with Brianna heading this um. Um, you know, we received two point two five million payment from Rich, Rich. Richfield. And um, last time Cynthia, as I recall, talked about Brianna having a certain amount of time. Because of Regwood and that this could be something that she could work on. So I embrace that idea and especially since it was town staff driven. And I think it would fit nicely. Um, with this goal and it would kind of narrow that goal down and to address Mike's questions and concerns. Do you want me to repeat it?
No, I've got it. Thanks. Steve, did you want to comment?
Sure, um, I can provide some basis for this. And why this is, and I I guess I I kind of championed this, this one. Uh, just first of all, uh. Some data, you know, Fund one hundred currently has about three point nine five million dollars. It's owed. Another uh six hundred twenty five thousand dollars from the COPS uh COP repayment. So that'll give about four point seven million. Uh, outstanding from Palo's Colorado's is about ten point two five million. And and this is all straight from the staff report. And the payments will be made based upon permits and certificates and uh certificates of occupancy. So. You know, we've got some money now and then the rest of it's gonna come in the future over probably several years once construction starts. So we've got some money now that that uh. Might be available, but you know, this is gonna be something that's actually gonna go on for for several years. And in the, in the research I've done, um, and you know, staff is pretty consistent in saying that there are no restrictions on use of the funds. And and I see references to that they are in lieu of development mitigations. And include recreation and open space. I've never seen anything that says fourteen million is devoted to to recreation and open space. And even if that did exist between a representative of, I think it was Richland at the time, it's now Richfield. Um, the the town manager doesn't have the authority to 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 assign those monies. It it's, it's, it's the town council who has to do that. And and one of the documents I've referenced is the revenue enhancement study, which was done two years after the. Course went away and and it's it's, it has the consistent uh comment about it's all mitigations, including. course went away and, and it's, it's, it has the consistent uh comment about it's all mitigations, including recreation and, and open space. And I, and I support the recreation and open space piece of it. But I'm also cognizant that, for example, there's a huge traffic issue on Maraga Road between Campolindo Drive and the town line or via Granada. And Palace Colorado's is gonna probably exacerbate that problem. So y- you know, we need to take a number of, of, of uh challenges into account and, and that's on our ticket. My understanding. So you know, why I proposed the process, I proposed the process because it has a lot of variables to it. And it's gonna be over a significant period of time. And so doing it sort of ad hoc on, on an as time basis, you know, over time, just doesn't make sense. What a, what a defined process might do for us, well, it, it might establish the focus areas for use of the, of the funds. That would include, of course, recreation and uh open space. Probably should include traffic, mitigations. Whatever else. I'm, you know, I can hypothesize and I came up with a list of about twelve different good things that we could spend money on spend far more than the, 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 the total num- uh value of the uh, the funds that we made available. And then also in define involvement, you know, what role for example, will the Parks and Recreation Commission have in this? They, to me, they're the, they're probably the primary entity for developing that plan. And if we don't use them for that plan, then why have the Parks and Rec Commission? That's really their function, you know, so it, so I'm, I look at this, you're developing this process, this doesn't have to be a, a you know, you know, really detailed thing and hire consultants or whatever, but to some degree, it's like Mike is saying, put something down on paper. A- and the other question is, well, when do we, when do we make those decisions? Do we do it? You know, as, as an opportunity arises and we say, well, I'd spend some money on that, or, or maybe do we say well, w- we've been using part of this money as an emergency fund, so let's, let's have a bucket there. And I'm sorry, I'm disappointing you, right? And then, you know, you might have a bucket for opportunistic uh things, things that do come up over time. And then you have a bucket for things that you fund as part of the budgeting cycle. Because this, these things will require resources. And that's when we plan resources is during that, that budgeting cycle. That's the kind of stuff that I'm thinking of.
Right, is that?
That's, that's, that's it. Happy to answer.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Um, I, I just, I, I just want um to, to remind all of us that we're not arguing the merits right now about what the funds should be used for, what the funds can be used for. What, what we should be focusing on, we're setting goals. So I just, I just want to make sure we don't go down that rabbit hole. And I, I think, uh, my suggestion is that we um consider adopting Theresa's proposed change because I think that addresses Mike's concerns, Theresa's concerns without without, so we, it, let me read it, with public input, develop and initiate a process for identifying and prioritizing uses for unrestricted, unassigned Palo Colorado's fund. Including, among other things, consideration of a townwide recreation, open space plan. Sona.
Yeah, I, I think because we are explaining that, you know, that this, it, this is a, a important consideration and we've heard about it in the past. We're still, we're talking about, you know, getting public input such as surveys or whatever it may be to validate that and and understand the pulse of the community on that point. So I feel that including the language regarding the consideration, um i- it seems fair. And you did add, among other things, right?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
All right, are we good?
I know, but go ahead.
How many thumbs up do we have? Okay, we have four, 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 four one on that.
Yes, can I, can I just nitpick something? So after Palace Colorado's funds, you want a comma.
Yes.
Including, among other things, comma, consideration of a townwide recreation of the state plan. Thank you.
Point of order, I, I, I just want to state that I had several comments to make and I was not able to make them, so I'm, I'm not disappointed.
Mike, that's my bad. What, what else did you want to say on this? I mean, I, I, other than, we, we're not arguing merits or.
Not arguing merit, we're try, if we're trying to have a discussion. Um, I like to have a discussion. If you want to move on, move on.
Do you have anything to add or something different, or are we, or have, have you um sort of articulated your, all of your arguments?
Um, the first point I would make is I would flip the sentence that Theresa mentioned. It should begin with the recreation, open space, public input for recreation, open space, and then we talk about the Palos funds. I think the emphasis is important by flipping that. Steve made um several points and I was gonna ask Steve, some of the points that you're making, Steve, I agree with because when we have the Palos funds, the development impact fees, which I think is a lot of what you were referring to, is important to make sure we understand what that is and how much that is, right? Um, and that's why I was thinking what I had mentioned earlier in the first bullet of, you know, taking this intention, setting direction to staff and, and taking this intention and defining what it is, because the more we talk, the more I'm hearing there's some differences of opinions. And we do have documentations that I guess we all aren't on the same page for, so I, I, I see a lot of opportunity there to clear up this confusion. Because I think there is um clarity around it. So I'll stop there, but I just wanted to say a couple more things.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
And, and Mike, I just want to know, I think that's the elephant in the room. Is this historical documentation is existence or not existence?
Yeah, and, and we will, uh, we will, of course, address that at the appropriate time, right? I mean, yes, Theresa.
Um, thank you. Um, I guess I would like us to, to talk about what Mike said. So he said with public input, consider um, Polorados, Palos Colorado's funds um for a townwide recreation and open space plan. Is that kind of what you're, what you're getting at, Mike?
Yes. And I'm trying to say the, the recreation, open space should come first and the fund should come second.
Okay.
And I think, uh, and I, I think the disagreement is that at least, I, I, I think Steve and I are aligned on this, is that that is too restrictive. Because there may be other uses that uh we, when we have the discussion on the merits at a later time, that we deem appropriate uses of the Palos funds. And so that, I believe, is why um the suggestion was to not lead with the public and open space plan, but to include that as one of the potential options to consider as we look at not just the Palos money, but, but other funding as well, because this, this, this goal could take into account other sources of funds. Steve, is that a fair?
I agree, and, and, you know, I, I assure you, my, my reference to including Parks and Rec is, is sort of that window into the public, which might include a survey of, of, or whatever. I, I just think that, I, uh-oh, Cynthia's got.
And, and we also, we also have a separate goal of improving outreach.
Right.
Which, which underscores that point and that outreach is not limited to parks and to, to recreation, it's on everything. What's that?
And I think we've, we've got to recognize that part, that Palace Colorado's even i- it's a question of sizing, you know, how much of the funds are gonna be for one versus a, another, it's not all gonna go to, to uh parks uh or open space and, and uh recreation. So eh, I think putting that at the end gives it emphasis, but also make sure that it's not just the only thing.
And, and conversely, we may have leftover funding in other areas for recreation. Like, like excess reserves, like mid-year adjustments next month, so that's why I'm saying funding can come from several areas. But it's what do we want?
Again, these are goals. These are goals.
Right.
So um anyway, I, I think we had four thumbs up for Theresa's proposed modification. Do, cannot, do we still have four thumbs up? Okay, thank you. All right, uh Cynthia, you have that one?
Check.
Check, okay.
Was that an enthusiastic check or?
I got it, I'm on it.
All right, next one, uh, traffic and pedestrian safety. Mike, you had some comments on that one.
Yeah, well, I'm so glad to see we're continuing that piece. I think um we, we made a lot of good um progress. So my add on this is something that uh two of the three years the council said, you know, we're too busy. And it's traffic congestion. And that's one of the issues I hear commonly. Traffic and, and not just in the, today, but in the future, because we're gonna be adding more than two thousand people in this town. So if it's bad now, think what's gonna happen. Um, and I'd like to read a couple quotes from the general plan. I know we quote the general plan on land use, but we should, you know, look at the general plan on, I think, all items.
Mike, 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 can, can you just please propose what, what you wanted to add in the goal?
Okay, what, what I just said, this is where I think context is important, and if you cut it off, then I think you limit the discussion, but that's your call.
What, why, can you just propose what you would like to add and then we can see if we, we need some context? I'm, I'm sorry, I just, it, it just, we, we, again, I, I want, these are, this is goal setting and not arguments on the merits.
Okay, and I'm not arguing, I'm trying to give context around my point so people can understand my point. I think context is important. My goal was enhance traffic safety and congestion for current and future populations. Prendes um two thousand plus people. Um, in, in reference to what you've done, because I like the traffic safety portion here, what I was gonna suggest is we modify this goal to say discuss and address traffic congestion and pedestrian safety. And then keeping particularly around our schools and crosswalks. I was then going to add one specific item, which um since I can't put my um goals up, let me call it up, one specific item that would say this specifically includes discussing actions to address cut through traffic from Canyon through our town. And especially for Sona, but I guess for all of us. When we had a two-way direction of traffic, that was the number one traffic issue that I heard from residents and quite loudly, Mike, you need to do something about that. Because people have their GPS, you're an Uber driver, they go over the Oakland Hills and they drive through our town. And that's usually when they speed up, they hit the straightaway through Maraga. So as part of this, um, I think we need to address it, just like when we said last year, traffic safety. Well, there's a si- a missing piece of a sidewalk in front of a school. There are things that can be called out and I think um while that may get tactical, items of importance of a priority, I think would be included in what I just suggested as the goal.
Any comments? Theresa.
Um, I, Mike, I appreciate what you have to say about Canyon. I remember when we had a bridge that had two ways and that was a huge problem. You know, because Waze and Google would send them through that. In fact, I followed a car um just the other day that was a delivery person and boy, they hit that after the Canyon Bridge and they were heading fast. And when we were at the um Canyon Bridge dedication, a woman came up to, I think Renata and I, and said, could you have a stop sign here so that people wouldn't do just what you talked about? And I, so, you know, I completely hear you about the problems and it's good to know that there's some institutional knowledge that you have, that you're bringing, you know, to this council. Um, with all of that said, I think the, the way it reads, keep focus on traffic and pedestrian safety, particularly around our schools and crosswalks, is I think it addresses that. And if we start having those, those cars coming really fast and you know, bad things happening, going that, the other direction, I think that this, this gives us um the information that we need so that we can address it, address it in this year.
Steve. Steve, you're muted.
Thank you. The wording I've captured, I think is something like uh discuss and address traffic and pedestrian safety, particularly around our schools, crosswalks and through town routes. Does that cover it?
That, what I'd like to add, one word after traffic, add congestion.
Um, if I may add some history on this, this has come up in prior years and the reason it has not been put in our goals is our goals um also need to reflect what we actually have authority to do and the ability to do as a town, as a municipality. I agree that um that traffic is of concern to everyone. I know we heard a lot of comments when we opened the Canyon Bridge about through traffic. But through traffic and congestion are within the purview of the La Merinda Action Plan, which is not a Maraga thing, it's a, it's a collaboration between Lafayette, Maraga and Merinda. It is the, and traffic congestion projects and programs are driven by and funded by the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, which is the Measure J agency that is, you know, allocates on behalf of all the jurisdictions in the county funds for programs and, and it's, it's not, because we're not in a silo. We are part of a larger community and the traffic issues are being caused, not just by Maraga cars, but by people coming through. So in the past, the, just, you know, as I recall, and my memory may be wrong, the reason that the, this, this specific language has not made it into the goals is because it's not really um achievable in a silo. We are, so, you know, the, what we've argued is that we will continue to play our role on the LPMC, on SWAT, in CCTA, and, and try to obtain funding and support for our local programs and things we do have control over, and that's, that is included in here um in, in how this was written. But, but my, my view is to get more granular on the congestion part is setting expectations at an unrealistic level because we, we don't want to overpromise and underperform.
And I agree with everything you just said, and we should have it on the Maraga Town Council goals. We're working together. We should have it, we should work with LMPC, we should work with CCTA. Sometimes we'll, we'll recommend, but it should, it's a, it's a resident problem, it should be on our list to address. I, I agree with everything that Steve said. I, I just think congestion is the word that resonates with people. And when people hear about more new developments, that's exactly what they think, that and fire. How do I get around this town now? I mean, just within Maraga, people have issues.
So, so Mike, fair point. Would, would, would your concerns and Theresa's concerns be, just say, keep focus on traffic, comma, congestion and pedestrian safety? I mean, that, doesn't that take care of it?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I like what Steve added at the end.
What did Steve add at the end?
Well, this, this may not sit, particularly around our schools, crosswalks and through town routes. You know, we can have it as a goal, or, or it's really, what this is not a goal, this is a priority. And so
Yeah.
I, what we're, what we're really communicating here is this is important.
Okay, so Steve, around our schools, crosswalks.
Correct, schools, comma, crosswalks and through town routes.
Yes.
I just want a friend, friendly reminder that the bridge is a state and federally funded bridge and street that's open to the community that we're not able to limit, so.
Yeah, I, but there are, there are speed bumps and there are other things that can potentially be used to, I, uh, for example, on Country Cut Drive where these, these people cut through and, and I, I swear they get to 100 miles an hour between uh, St. Andrews and Canyon Road.
And many towns have these issues and there's tools in the toolkit and everything Cynthia just said is absolutely true. And I, I still think we should have it.
Okay, so, so let me, let me read back what I think we're coalescing around. Keep focus on traffic congestion and pedestrian safety, particularly around our schools, crosswalks and through routes. Is that good?
Works for me.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So Cynthia, you got that? Thumbs. All right, um. Next, improve the town's communications with an outreach to the public. I believe that's Sona and Mike. Sona, you wanna kick off the discussion of that?
Sure. So I, in our last meeting, I did speak quite a bit about, um, outreach and communication, so I won't repeat it all, but essentially, you know, I'm, I'm really pleased that we are focusing on this, but my suggestion is to be more forceful and more strategic in this goal to make sure we are truly reaching a broad swath of the community and to make sure that it's a two-way conversation. So my proposal is this, I, I could, I think we should consider revising the goal to read, improve the town's communication with an outreach to the public using innovative approaches that are inclusive of all segments of the community and encourage public input and feedback.
Say that again, Sona, please. Those of us who are a little, for me, who's slow on the uptake.
Sure, because if you remember, I talked about the importance of, um, being inclusive in the communication. So improve the town's communication with an outreach to the public using innovative approaches that are inclusive of all segments of the community and encourage public input and feedback.
I like that.
I like that a lot.
I, I have a couple adds.
Part, you said it far faster than I could write, though, but.
Okay, good. Well.
I'm okay with.
Yeah, inclusive of all segments of the community and what?
And encourage public input and feedback.
I think, I, I think.
There, is there a comma?
Oh, go, go, I'm sorry, go ahead Cynthia.
Is there a comma after community or not?
Oh, man, I haven't thought about.
Kind of different, a little bit of a different meaning. Do you wanna, do you want me to show it? Do you guys wanna see it?
Yes. Yeah. I'll let you decide on the comma.
Is this an Oxford versus Cambridge debate?
No, I'm just, okay, no, it's not.
We used to talk about semicolons.
I'd say there's a comma.
No, no comma.
No comma. Okay, I'm good with that. No comma, I agree.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
I would have put a comma.
All right, Mike, did you wanna say anything or did Sona cover it for you?
Uh, well, I, I have a, I wanna insert a semicolon, I'm just kidding.
Oh, no.
No, you would, just a little side story, when we first were in the council, we spent at least an hour on punctuation. So I'm glad we've, um, evolved.
We've evolved significantly, yes.
Yes, right. So I, I guess I would just, when we say improve town's communication, to me, what we wanna do is improve town's engagement via communication with, um, and outreach on and on and on. So I just, I think that's a broader term than just communication. So that's one thought I had. The other item, um, this is implied, but I was gonna add the word including surveys, but I, I, I think it's fairly implied, so I'll just let that one go. Um, I thought it might be, this is pretty broad, right? Um, and you say, okay, well, when we do communications and outreach and surveys and we're inclusive, it's, you know, that is like really huge. So I thought it could be helpful to provide some direction on this goal in terms of scope. Okay. So I was gonna add a sentence that said, quote, "This will occur for major town projects, key issues and town council feedback regarding resident satisfaction." So I sought, thought those three things would cover the key things that we want to enhance communication on. Major projects, key issues, town feedback. So for example, Maraga Center Specific Plan, the housing element, the Bollinger Valley Rezone, okay, those all, you know, naturally fall in there. You know, and what's a key issue? Well, we'd have to talk about that in, you know, some type of an annual or every other year, town council feedback on survey. So I thought that gives a little more clarity and tune to, well, how often are we gonna do this? Because Cynthia could say, okay, give me three more people for all the communication we're doing. So, you know, we, I think we have to like, try to give it a little, um, scope and, um, direction. So I thought that would be helpful.
All right, any discussion of this proposed ad? Teresa?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I understand what Mike is saying, but I think it's implied in what, um, Sona has, how she has, you know, announced this goal. I think, I think what Sona said is just perfect.
I, yeah, I, you know, we almost need a, a working copy of these goals and priorities, where we have the goals and priorities, and then underneath them, we have some bullets, and I love bullets, uh, that, that, you know, communicate some of these details that we're really expecting. Uh, cause keeping in mind, this is also intended for public consumption and, and their attention span is even shorter than mine. But, but, so I, I, I think what it, it, how it currently is, is, is probably at the right level detail. Uh, I think, you know, what Mike's talking about is next level down, which gets set when you actually decide and design how you're gonna get that feedback from the, from the, um, community.
Right. And I would expect that staff will, will design and, and propose to us how their, how this is gonna get implemented and we'll have an opportunity to, to, to comment on that.
I would hope the council will take a big role in that.
Yeah. Okay, any other, any other, I mean, I, I love what Sona proposed. I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna mess with a good thing. Sona?
I'll just say to, I'll just say, I, I was very strategic about using the word innovative, Mike, because I do think a lot of what you're saying is that we need to think more innovatively. Yes, surveys is one way, but what else? And what else is there out there that we can be leveraging and using and really pushing harder on it? So that's why I use that word and, and I hope it captures kind of the spirit of what you're asking for too.
Okay. Okay, do we have, um, do we have a thumbs up on, on the proposed language from Sona? Yes, okay. All right, um. All right, uh, number 13, the, uh, diversity and inclusion bullet. Mike, you wanted to comment on that one?
Yeah, the, the only question I had is, is, do we plan to do the United Against Hate Week again? And if we do, should we put that down? Now, that's a specific sure, but, um, I think it, there are people that read this. Improve diversity and inclusion throughout the town. Well, what are you gonna do? And, and I heard that last, what are you gonna do? And, and I'm worried about what you're gonna do. Um, so that's pretty broad. If we give one example of United Against Hate Week, oh, that makes me, now, oh, now I really understand and, oh, I really support that. So I was wondering if that is helpful.
Well, I know the council, um, when, when the Ad-Hoc Committee, Mike, asked for authority to move forward with United Against Hate Week, the my, my recollection was that the, uh, it was a, let's do it in 2021 as our first year, and then we'll do it in 22 and see if we can build on it and, and in perpetuity. Um, I, I don't have, I, I think that, so are you suggesting we say contribute, effort to improve diversity and inclusion through that, the town, comma, including continuing to sponsor United Against Hate Week?
Perfect.
All right, is that, would that be agreeable to the council? Teresa?
Um, thank you. You know, I, I think that that's great. My only concern with that is limiting it. Because we don't know, something could happen next week that we would say, oh my gosh, we definitely want to weigh in on that. And so, uh, that's my concern that, you know, uh, council could say, oh, no, it's just limited to that.
And I don't. Including, but it's including.
You know, if, if we, if we kind of say including and make sure that it's not limiting, um.
How about including but not limited to?
Yes, that would be perfect. That would address my concerns.
Okay.
Mayor Sauce? I wanna make sure.
Denise, hi.
Hi, I wanna make sure we're not making a decision now that we are participating in this event, that that decision had been made previously.
It had.
Okay.
It had.
I wanna make sure for the record that that's noted.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Cynthia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that Mike and I asked for authority to do it this year and to continue it in perpetuity.
That was my understanding.
Thank you.
And the council approved it unanimously. All right, so we, it's, uh, the, the, the draft goal plus a comma, including but not limited to continuing to sponsor United Against Hate Week. Thumbs up?
Yep.
Okay, Mike, you're nodding. Is that a, a thumbs up? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Um, 14, work collaboratively with the community to improve Maraga's business climate. I have Sona and Mike next to this one. Sona, you wanna go first?
Sure. So really, I was thinking about this one in terms of, you know, it may be implied, but have we thought about, you know, really being more forceful about working collaboratively with the community, including the St. Mary's community, um, in terms of improving the college community and the business climate? And I wanna hear from you all, your reactions to that, um, and better understand if we think that maybe these could be squeezed together somehow, because they do relate in that, you know, the business climate, uh, really, some of the biggest population here, you know, don't, so, don't shop here, or don't eat lunch here, or don't feel like they have opportunities here. Um, so including them as a key kind of stakeholder that we think about just seems important. Um, because in all honesty, then like, that becomes the, the future of, of Maraga's business climate is in terms of like, the college always being there and that psych, and that age group and demographic always being there. So, um, I just wanted to ask for other additional comments on that as I do feel like it's an important thing to address.
And, and just as, as one of the drafters of this community includes St. Mary's College. Um, but if, if, you know, are, are you suggesting we be more explicit or that we, um, and, and, and community as used here would include people who are visitors, people who, um, work here, uh, people who, um, you know, attend the students at St. Mary's. So, um, yeah, that is now, I suppose we could, we could consider adding like, um, you know, collaborate with the community and, and other stakeholders.
I think that actually helps. I think that does help because it's, there, there are these other stakeholders that, you know, have an important voice in that discussion.
All right, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I talked first. My apologies. Go ahead, Teresa.
Oh, thank you. You know, I think Sona brought up a really important fact. Um, we have a college in this town. And I think if we say, you know, Maraga's community, college community, that, that addresses that, that we are acknowledged that we have this campus and we need to, to think about them like we think about, um, the business, business climate. You know, I think that that's a really important point. And I think it would be a good idea to, to call it out.
Any other thoughts? I guess, Mike, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
I wouldn't mind, uh, community and stakeholders, just to make sure it's broad. Specifically calling out, um, St. Mary's. You, you call out one and then, you know, there's others. So community and stakeholders would work for me.
I guess the other, the, the kind of, I, I, I would like St. Mary's to be included in community. Um, and if we, if we list them separately and suggest they're not. And I, I, you know, that, that kind of viscerally doesn't appeal to me. Or optically.
Could you put and St. Mary's community call, community, St. Mary's community?
So, so it would say, work collaboratively with the community and other stakeholders to improve Maraga's business climate.
Yeah, that doesn't, to me, that's not enough. I think, I think St. Mary's would benefit from us acknowledging their presence. And, you know, there aren't other, other partners like St. Mary's in Maraga. Um, it has, you know, what's the population there? Over 4,000? There's no other, um, business or community stakeholder that has the what St. Mary's has to this community. So I think it would be, um, inappropriate not to mention them. And I think it gives us an opportunity to think of them as a partner. Um, which isn't always clear. You know, we do think about the businesses as, as a partner, and I think we need to to spell out that St. Mary's is also a partner. So I think this was a really good call on Sona's part.
So what about work collaboratively with the community, including St. Mary's College, to improve Maraga's business climate?
I like that.
That's what I was just thinking.
Oh, good. I read your mind, Mike.
That works.
Is that agreeable to everyone?
I'm, I'm less than in bivalent, I would. I, I think I would not include St. Mary's College, St. Mary's College myself. You know, this is a majority rule event, so.
Okay, well, I think we have four thumbs up for this.
Okay.
Sona, are you good? Okay. Are you have that Cynthia?
So you comma, including St. Mary's College.
Comma, to improve Maraga's business climate.
Okay, so no other and other stakeholders?
That's, I mean, that's implicit in, I think, in community. Because I, I, you know, again, I would argue that that's a very broad term that includes anyone who touches Maraga at any point during the day. Uh, okay, so, um, what I would like to do, yes, Mike?
I didn't get a chance to make my comments. I was responding to Sona's comments.
Oh, I thought you were good. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I'm never good, you know that. Um, first a question. So trying to understand what this means, work collaboratively with the community, including St. Mary's, to improve Maraga's business climate. What does that mean?
What it says, to, to just make this a better place. I mean, this is, this is a carryover from last year. Our goal last year was was wisely broad and aspirational be, because, you know, COVID hit and, and continued, and so we were able to adapt, but it, it means, you know, to, that, that we want to take whatever opportunities we have to collaborate with other interested parts of the community to make this a better place for, for retail, for business, for our employers and, um, for, for, uh, you know, improving people's choices.
Okay, I, 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 and that's, I don't think what we said last year, but I, I find that just a bit vague for me, and I guess uh, what I was gonna suggest is something different is probably a different goal, but just to give you the idea, I was gonna talk about supporting Maraga businesses in the chamber, which would be different than what you're articulating here.
And I think, and I think the reason it is vague is because that's tactical. And those are, those are ways to do it, um, that will further the goal and potentially help achieve the goal. and potentially help achieve the goal. But I, I think that the draft was, did not specify who which parts of the community, because I think that's, that's an ever, that's a broad group of people and is ever shifting.
Right, but what I'm suggesting is not focused on the community, I'm focused on Maraga businesses. That's my goal. So it sounds like a different goal.
But businesses are part of the community.
Okay, then I just completely disagree. Um, would you like to hear mine then, since we're saying it is related?
Is this a separate goal?
This would be, well, I think if you're saying supporting or working collaboratively with the community, which includes Maraga businesses, then I guess it is a related goal, and I would rephrase it.
Okay.
Okay, so to me, what, what we've talked about in past years is working with the Chamber of Commerce to enhance, first of all, streamlining the rules and regulations and ordinances town to be more business friendly. Um, we've also done grant money. So what, what I did as the Chamber liaison, um, and in their board meetings and have had conversations with them, uh, discussions of what we can jointly do. And you saw their email, which I personally was very good. So I came up with three things. So the goal to me is supporting the Maraga businesses and chambers. So I'm more specific. Okay, because if we support the Maraga businesses, we're supporting the community. Okay, the community has more services and restaurants to go to versus them closing their doors. So mine is more specific, and we would support them in three ways using ARPA money. The first way is we're going to provide a second round of grant. We did grants two years ago under the Rescue Act. So we'll give them grant money and we'll let the town manager and the chamber, uh, work on, you know, what the qualifications are. So we're not gonna go into the weeds.
Mike, Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is not on the agenda. Um, this is a discussion of how to allocate the ARPA funds and, and indeed, hold on, please let me finish. And the latter from the chamber actually was also not on this agenda item. It was on allocation of the ARPA funds, which is something that we're going to talk about later, but we write it into the public record out of, out of respect for them. So I don't think that we are in a position today on this agenda to talk about whether we should be giving the chamber ARPA money or giving our businesses ARPA money. That's to be determined. So, um, I, I just, you know, I, I think this is outside the agenda.
Okay, because this is, this is a goal and how to fund the goal. So I'll just talk about the goal. Okay, how about that?
Thank you.
So the, the goal is supporting our businesses in the chamber through a second round of grants, details to be worked out. Um, supporting the chamber new programs and events. And by the way, their letter was related to this agenda item. The heading, um, didn't quite make it. But they have many new items and I can articulate, um, a few, but we don't have to go into that level of detail. And then support the chamber. Um, because, you know, if we don't have a Maraga chamber, where are we? So there's ways that I think we can support the chamber. So that's the way I was going to phrase the goal that helps the business community and helps the chamber. And I think that's a very important goal. And, and I do not think it's inappropriate to go in more detail or to say how we do that. Because I think that's important, but I'll be glad to stop there on the goal.
All right, any, any, um, thoughts on this? Teresa?
I'm fine with the way it was before, but uh, thank you, Mike, for those thoughts.
Sona?
Yeah, um, I just want, I just wanted to kind of circle back on this because, um, I, I think maybe how I initially conveyed it and then seeing how we just read it and then hearing Mike's comments, I, I'm not sure if like it's if, um, I articulated my point about St. Mary's, and I actually think Teresa did a better job of articulating my point. Um, I think what I'm trying to say is that, you know, there's a business climate that we in, that we need to work collaboratively with the community to support and enhance and improve. And then there's, there's also college community climate. And I, I think that the way that we've connected the two may, may be a little awkward. I'm trying to say that, like, we as a town need to acknowledge St. Mary's to Teresa's point and work collaboratively, collaboratively with them to improve the college community and the college, you can call it climate or whatever. And then we also need to col, work collaboratively, collaboratively with the community to improve business climate. And if you want to add a piece about the chamber there, then can have a discussion about that. But, um, it just didn't sit well that I think I didn't maybe articulate it clearly.
Steve?
I think I'm hearing two goals now. And, and the one goal is focused on working collaboratively the, with the community, including the chamber to improve Maraga's business climate. And then the second goal should really be focused on, and I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of it. Uh, focused solely on working with St. Mary's College. Um, both to improve our own community and also to support, you know, the college.
I think that, yeah, I, I, I believe that maybe it is too now, because it, it was a bit awkward in just kind of placing them there. It, it's Teresa's point. I was really trying to acknowledge and make sure that we as, as the town and council are acknowledging that partnership.
Yeah.
Uh, so something to the effect, Steve, of im- improve and enhance the collaboration and partnership with St. Mary's College?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's exactly what I said.
No, well done. Is there a comma in there?
Could you repeat that again?
Improve and enhance the collaboration and partnership with St. Mary's College. And then the, the proposed then to, on the prior one, so we've now have fifteen, we're setting a record, I think, for number of, of goals. Um, work collaboratively with the community, including the chamber to improve Maraga's business climate.
Yes.
I'm a thumbs up on those. Okay. Alright, um, so we have, we, we still have to do number one. I, uh, I said we would have, because that has been presented, um, the alternative. And, um, I want to, um, just, I see there's a hand raised. I, I said I would open public comment again. I would, I would like to do that right now if we can, and then we'll circle back and figure out. Steve, yes?
Has, Mike, have you proposed your alternative, your additional?
My new goal? I've not done my new goal. I think the process was to do that later.
Oh, I thought you did. I thought that was the first one.
No.
Oh.
Okay, um.
And, and just for, for information, I'm getting a lot of texts about the problems of not just live stream, but trying to hear, and would you please open public comment as soon as possible? So just to share that.
Okay, would, would you be okay with my opening public comment right now, guys? So that folks who, yeah, okay.
Will we do it a third time then? Potentially.
Sure.
Alright, okay.
Um, okay, uh, I see Kendall Langen's hand raised. Kendall? And you have three minutes.
Yes, well, I apologize, but, um, the three minute rule should be out the window for everybody right now because this entire meeting has not been visible. I, I, I threw a fluke of just cutting and pasting, I was able to get in. I was unable to attend the beginning of the meeting. I was not able to attend the meeting until about a half an hour ago, and I've been listening. And I have many comments about things that you are saying, but just on the business part of it, just going back from the most recent comment till now, until you cut me off inappropriately. Um, I am a stakeholder. I am a business owner. I have never been called on or asked anything from the Maraga Chamber of Commerce. They have never done anything for me. They are a, a false entity. For all of you to be doing votes, by the way, with thumbs up, I just think is appalling. Now, I will admit, uh, to get into micro discussion, but Sona, I do not know where you think you get the background on this, but I will admit that there's three communities. There's the St. Mary's community, there's the community, and then there's the business community. But I will ask you, Sona, what has St. Mary's done for Maraga? And I will ask you, Sona, do you know all the community? Have you walked the neighborhoods? No. So I would say that what you guys are talking about as far as generalities, I need to hear specifics. What are you specifically going to do? I hear you talking about St. Mary's. Are you talking about maybe? What are you talking about? So do you want to have more, um, canyon clubs? So St. Mary's students have places to go drink beer? I don't know. I honestly, I will tell you, I'm going to be very professional right now, and I think we need to coordinate with St. Mary's with their basketball games and create really ex, a large excitement about St. Mary's basketball within the community. That's what we need to do. But this is not discussed by you because you are not dealing with specifics and you're not dealing with reality. Now, I just want to back up for a second and point out that I have been unable to communicate with you at the beginning of this meeting on public comment. I have many other things to talk about. I think that this entire meeting should be disqualified because the public comments were not able to be seen. I have already received many phone calls, texts and emails, and you all know me. I don't need to give you my personal references. I've talked to over four hundred people in the community in the last two months. And I'm getting communications about this meeting specifically as being, what the heck is going on? How come me, Kendall Langen, has to reply for what you're about this fake meeting? So I would just say to all of you, I did get threatened this week on Nextdoor for commenting about the graffiti at the corner of Camino Ricardo and Maraga Way. I have brought Sona many companies into my office building to create new business opportunity. I have Sona been accused of being a drug user by a former mayor. So I just guess all of you are okay with all of this. And here I am doing the best I can for our community. And by the way, I gave a history lesson to seven boys, uh, Cub Scouts uh, this Saturday about the history of Maraga. And one of the most pleasant things I did, Teresa, is show them a picture of Cowboy Bill on my building. Who was a cowboy back in the forties and rode, and it looks like an elegant man on the horse, but actually he was a worker. And
Kendall, I, I've given you a lot of leeway, but you, you're way over time. Would you mind wrapping up?
I would just say this one last thing, Renata, is thank you for your extra time. But I do know a lot about Maraga. I am talking with people in the background, and I guarantee you'll hear more about it. And I just ask you all to get a taste of reality. And I'm sorry, I have no, I don't hate anybody, and I'm always trying to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kendall. Ellen? You're unmuted, Ellen.
I'm muted.
There you are. Hi.
Okay, um, really good work tonight, uh, pre-council members on, uh, going through a lot of, a lot of work here. And I was just cheering here quietly when you were talking about St. Mary's College because um, I am fully aware of the housing element that we are going to be facing. And St. Mary's College is a very important piece in that conversation, not only for housing for students, but housing for professors and other staff people. So it's very important that they be on all of our minds in the discussion about housing. And I also have been, have announced many of the lectures, classes, uh, concerts, performing arts shows to bring them, uh, to bring what they do into our community. And I think the more that we are aware of the richness that our college provides, the better we, better off we are. So I commend you all for including St. Mary's College as a very important part of the goals for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Good to hear from you. Um, okay, um, so closing public comment. And, um, I would propose that we take a five, yes, Denise?
If I may, before, uh, we take a break, if, if that's what you're going to propose, I just wanted to respond to the public commenter to inform the public that this meeting was appropriately conducted under AB three sixty-one, which allows teleconference meetings as long as the town council has an inner ba, internet-based service provider at, you know, throughout the meeting. If our internet were to shut down, then the meeting could not continue, but since our internet continued pursuant to AB three sixty-one, this meeting was appropriately conducted.
And, and I will add that we sent out a news flash, and it's on the front page of our website that says, one twenty-six twenty-two, council meeting livestream technical difficulties. Blah, 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 we're working on it. Go to the Zoom link located on the agenda to view and listen to the meeting. So we're directing people there on our front page.
Okay, thank you. Alright, um, would council object to a five-minute break? Okay, uh, let's, let's reconvene at, uh, at eight forty-three. Thanks. And don't forget to turn off your cameras and your microphones. Thank you. Okay, we, we're back. Um, so, um, the, the one goal that we have on, that was on the drafts that were presented for the council's consideration um, that we have not closed the loop on is the first one. So I would propose we go back to that one, resolve that one, and then Mike has, um, a goal to propose that we add, if I understand correctly. So, um, so just to, uh, refresh everyone's memories, so we have goal number one as drafted. And then Mike had, uh, read into the record a, uh, alternative that we tabled so that we could talk about all the other goals, because there was a belief, I think, on the part of some council members that some of the things that were in Mike's first goal were, uh, covered by subsequent ones. Now we've had the opportunity to go through the subsequent ones. So I want to circle back to, to goal number one. Um, so Mike, would you kindly read your proposed alternative again, and with any changes you want to make based on the discussion we just had?
Yep, so let's take the, there's two pieces here, one at a time. Develop a financial plan to fund unfunded needs on an ongoing basis, given substantial available funding, and eliminate Maraga's structural deficit. So little context, what we're providing is we're providing direction to staff that we would like to develop a financial plan to address the unfunded needs in this town. That's the priority. The way the first goal is written, the priority isn't there. If we don't do that, it interferes with the workings of our town. And the way it does is that when we have an item in front of us, there'll be a natural question, well, what about unfunded needs? What about unfunded needs? If we have this plan that says, oh, they're funded, and we have a plan, and we park them to the side. Now let's run this town on a normal basis. That's an incredible benefit to us. And I don't know how we tell the residents. that we're not going to prepare a financial plan when we have the funding to do it, to resolve unfunded needs. We're just gonna go along? You know, one step at a time, and we'll find funding, and we'll get it next year and hope for the best. I mean, that's sort of, we do, we go in scramble mode. I can't tell you from a financial perspective. It's a miss doing that. So.
And, and Mike, is that a goal, or is that, you're talking about process?
I'm talking about providing direction.
Okay, so that was part one. What was part two?
Okay, did you want to take other questions? Is that clear to everybody, whether you agree or disagree?
Yeah, because we, we've already gone over this once. I just wanted our memories refreshed on what you were proposing for the goal.
Right. And then the second one was we have two intentions, or we have an intention for two items, Measure K and Palo's Colorado's. From the conversation we have with Palo's, I think there's even some question on what the intention is. And the idea is let's just memorialize, instead of leaving it verbal, memorialize in writing one page what that is. Now, there is an agenda item that the town council's directed staff to bring to us, which is that exact item for Measure K. So why don't we, just when we have that conversation, let's do the same on Palo's and these different opinions and what the intention is. Well, let's get them out on the table and get them resolved. So I think after the conversation, that fits even more. Because if we don't, we'll just have these differences of opinions again and again and again.
And I'm sorry, so what's the goal?
The goal here was said additionally include developing a policy memorializing the intention of utilizing Palo's Colorado's and Measure K funding versus the current informal verbal undocumented approach. And, and once again, this does not tie anyone's hands. It does not bind anybody. It is not tactical. All it does today is we go from verbal to one piece of paper so that Sona comes in here, she can read what the policy is. And you can change it, but we know it lives. So it's not overly restrictive, in my opinion, from what's being suggested.
Okay, any, any further comments from council members? So we have two options on the table. We have the drafted one, which we could amend. And then we have Mike's proposed alternative. Steve?
At, at this point, I think we have three goals, and the second two, you know, both of what Mike has described, I think are worthwhile things to do. But they're not, they don't, they don't match with that first goal. Yeah, I mean, there, there are almost some, you know, some processes to it. I guess, so again, it's, to my mind, it's sort of, here's the goal, and then there are a lot of bullets that, you know, support that goal. Yeah, and I'd like to, I'd like to get, you know, firm clarity on both K and Palo's Colorado, since there does appear to be still some residual confusion on, on, on both of those. And yeah, to have a plan to address unfunded liabilities is, is a, is certainly worthwhile. Is, are they, do they warrant goals, or do they fit under the category of fiscal discipline and continuing for long-term fiscal sustainability and operational efficiency? It's, you know, if we agree that we're going to have those bullets underneath, I think the, the, the goal is stated is, is adequate.
And I would agree with the vice mayor. It's just the first goal is so broad. The reason that I'm uncomfortable leaving it as it is, is it doesn't identify the priority that's in front of us. So I would leave the generic goal, which one could have every year, quite frankly. But the priority is what's beneath it that we need to provide direction on to get us aligned.
All right, any, Sona?
So I'm, what I'm hearing is like a, which is a good one, is like a call for institutional knowledge in terms of better documenting and memorializing in order to create more institutional knowledge to inform decision-making. And I mean, those are all really good best practices. Really think that, you know, prioritizing that for the two use cases you mentioned are important. But I mean, like, doesn't this seem more of like an administrative procedural ask that ahead of the decision points for those two things, Measure K and Palo's decision points, that we, we as a council would ask for those types of documentation, and on a go-forward basis, we would have that and reference that and not rely on assumptions. But, you know, to put it in a goal, maybe too tact, like too too minute of a goal. But I hear you on it being like an administrative procedural best practice that can aid us and could be useful at the time of the decision-making. Is that something we can put away as a later ask?
Yeah, I, yes.
And, and to me, what if one of our roles is to provide policy and direction on a major item, and these cover millions and millions of dollars? It rises to the level of a goal in order to provide the direction. I mean, it's just like when we say we're going to allocate ARPA funds. That's pretty technical, if you ask me. You know, at the end of the day, so it, it's what the priority is. Let's put it that way. This current goal does not identify the priority. The two items I'm identifying here identify what the priority is. Otherwise, it's not clear.
Teresa, do you have any comments?
Um, thank you. And I appreciate what everybody has said. This, like Mike said, this, well, he didn't say this, but I'll say, this is a big deal. And for years, we haven't needed to have this conversation because there was no money coming our way from Palo's. But, and, and to Steve's point, one of the tipping points is grading. That will be a long ways off. But right now, we're talking 2.25 million. That's a lot of money for Maraga. And then the four-point something or another for the other bucket of money. You know, I think it, it is time to have to have our documentation in order so that, so that people in the public can see what happened. You know, the Palo's Colorado's thing happened so long ago that I think that we need to refresh our course. And I think that Mike is right. I think this is the time to have have that information come forward. And I think that's a policy issue. And not that we're going to say where the money goes, but just to see how, how we got this money. And to ask the question, you know, we could ask the question, but I don't think we have to ask the question. But I, I think that this is good. I think, Mike, you, you hit, you know, the elephant is in the room, and you called it out. So I think, thank you very much for that. That was very brave.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna, I, I'm still aligned with Steve on this. I think I understand Mike's points, but those are points that we are going to address specifically at the different milestones that Steve earlier identified. The, the, the specific discussion about Measure K funds, the specific discussion about Palo's, the specific discussion about ARPA, the continuing specific discussions about unfunded needs. We have been doing that. We will continue doing that. My, my problem with what Mike is proposing is it is putting outcomes into the goals. That there is going to be a written policy on something, that things are going to be documented. That may end up being the outcome, but I don't think we can agree to that right now, because we don't know. All, all we can do is say that these are priorities and important things that go towards, you know, what our core responsibility is, 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 you know, operations services, fiscal discipline, and positioning us for, for the long-term fiscal sustainability. So personally, the more we talk about this, the more I come back to what was drafted, because I think it encompasses everything that has just been said. Yes, Steve?
One solution to this, and it's going to take a little bit of faith, but you know, asking for clarity on both ARPA, historical clarity, clarity on both, not ARPA, but Measure K and Palo's Colorado's. To me, would it be a suitable subject for a future agenda item? Where we can ask staff, please provide us the background so that we can get that, that, that memorialized.
And we have it for Measure K. We did that last June.
Okay, so, so we already have that.
One down.
So we needed, we needed for Palo's Colorado's, and then maybe the future agenda item is to actually address it as, as a town council.
Well, and we have the goal, we have the goal on Palo's, right? We just agreed to a goal on Palo's, so that would presumably be part of the information we're provided.
Yes, yes. I'm giving a couple of ways to do it.
Yeah.
You have a detailed report on Palo's Colorado's that talks about the history, what the legal agreements are, when the money's coming in, what we've received to date. It was attached to your SWOT analysis. So all that history is there, and it is compiled into one report that talks about its intention, that talks about legally, what it's, and what it can be used for, what has been used for today. We could update some of its uses, but that has been presented to the council. I just want to clarify that.
And because that's fifteen, sixteen years old, and some of those memos, it's now to say today, we are going to memorialize this policy. So I, I get that.
I wrote the memo in January 2019.
May I? Okay, let, we're talking about the goals. We're not talking about sufficiency of information provided in staff reports. Let's focus on what we're doing here. I'm, I'm going to kind of call the question on this. So we have, we have the drafted goals, and we have Mike's alter, the drafted goal and Mike's alternative. How many council members are in favor of what was number one as drafted?
And just to be clear, Madam Mayor, we're not taking a vote. This is just a straw poll.
No, it's a straw poll. We're not, we're not voting. It's, that's why we're doing the, kind of the thumbs up. Do who, who, who is comfortable with, with as drafted? Okay, so we have four. All right. Okay. So let's continue, Mike, to your, your addition.
Yeah, one moment here. Again, it's unfortunate that we don't have the opportunity to share these in writing, because verbal loses a lot. Okay, so my new goal, that I, we had that really good speaker last meeting that talked about the Community Service Day, so I wanted to pick up on that. So the goal is as follows. Participate in Community, in Maraga Community Service Day, working with other community groups. That's the goal. And then a little context, please. Pleasant Hill, 2005, Walnut Creek, 2009 have been doing this and serve models to learn from. The objective is to create community projects to help the less fortunate and/or enhance our community within and beyond our city limits. Key goal is to attract the general population, not generally involved in community service to participate. Specifically, the town will assist on the following. Identify town projects which benefit the community, which is optional. So if the town has a project it would like to put on the list, it can. If not, that's okay, too. Communicating and engaging with residents regarding this day. Once a steering committee flushes this out, provides the structure, here's how it's going to work, then I believe the town can be helpful with communicating and engaging residents through our normal channels. Then the third item is to offer website signup on each project. We did website work on United Against Health, and I noticed that the city of Walnut Creek has a very nice dropdown menu, community service page, dropdown for projects. They have ten projects. I want to work on food for homeless. Okay, and then I put my name and contact information down on another dropdown, something along those lines. The town would participate on the steering committee with other community groups, groups who have already expressed interest. Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, Maraga School District, Campolindo, Chamber of Commerce, Garden Club, and Bobby Preston. And I elevated Bobby Preston to a service group. That was my call. And I'd like to note, in abundance of caution, I will accuse myself on any straw poll votes taken on this item, since I launched this as a Rotarian. So it'll be up to the four of you as to whether you'd like to pursue this or not. And I'd like to, you know, sort of one question I heard was, why make this a goal? It's one day. The reason to make this a goal is because it's a new event, and it's a community event. And it helps it to get its beginning. Okay? The second year, if we did a second year, it would not be a goal. It's simply to get it to move forward, and it's something that's important. We send out our goals to everybody. You know, it'll be on the page, and people will get to see it, and that's one way to help to communicate it. So that's why I think in year one, make it a goal, and then after that, I'd be agreeing to let it go if there is a year two. That's the goal.
Mike, can I, may I ask a question just for clarification? So the goal you read was participate in the Maraga Community Service Day, working with community groups, period. That was the goal.
Right.
So that's the goal you're proposing. How the town participates is not part of your goal. All the stuff you just mentioned, all those were ideas and examples of ways in which it could happen. But that is not what, that we would be, if we put this as a goal, that's not what we're saying we're doing.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm trying to flush out exactly what the town's role is, because the question is, okay, what is our role? How much time and staff are we contributing to this, right? So that's why I was trying to say, the way that I see this is the town has three options or three items. One option is projects, second is communication, the third is help on the website. So we could, we could add that.
I don't think we can make that decision tonight. That's not on the agenda. I mean, we can place it as a goal.
Right.
We could consider placing it as a goal.
Understood.
But how the town participates would be up to, if we wanted to provide direction, we'd have to do that as a future agenda item. Or if we want to leave it to town staff to, because town staff does this all the time, right? They helped with the Butterfly Garden, right, which was a massive undertaking, and that wasn't a goal.
Right.
So, so I'm, I just want to get clarity, because I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that if this goal is placed on the list, that that means that we're going to do all the things you listed.
Okay, which, I didn't list much, but no, I, I, if we put this as a goal, I'd be very comfortable saying we will give it to the town manager's authority in terms of how we engage. And then the town manager can, you know, say, hey, we don't have time for this. Okay, then that's fine. And that, I'm sure, just like the town manager was very helpful on United Against Hate. There was only so much time, but we did something. And I'm very comfortable using the town manager's judgment.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any, any other questions from council members of Mike about the goal?
I
Steve?
I, I think it's a commendable goal. We historically had community days. It's going to be a hell of a year to pull it off, and it's going to be totally dependent upon Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, and organizations, not the town, to carry the load.
Agree.
However, if we want to make it a goal, I'm, I'm okay with that. We may not reach all goals, but I, I think it's a worthwhile goal to, to, to try to, to stretch ourselves.
Teresa?
Thank you. You know, I think that, that what you're, what you're talking about is something that sounds very wonderful, but I think we've got a full plate right now. And if, if we were going to put that as a goal, I would want to jump in with both feet. And I don't feel like this is the year for that. First of all, there's COVID. I'm not looking, you know, personally, to go into huge crowds. Um, I'm not looking, you know, personally to go into huge crowds and and do things. Um, I I think we have a responsibility to our community to make sure everything's safe. And I think this isn't the year for that, but I I commend you on the idea, you know. And we're so fortunate in this town to have Kiwanis and Lions and Rotary, you know, that do all of these things. And hopefully we'll have Chamber who will, when the time is right, be able to, you know, jump in with both feet and make a huge presence. But I don't think this is the year for that as a goal.
Sona.
I don't oppose this goal. Um, and I I feel like Steve put it really well with, you know, this is, this is very commendable. This does involve the collaboration effort of mostly the community groups. So I'm okay with it being there as something we aspire to towards. But the points about safety and um, you know, gathering and all of that just becomes a huge complication and we just have to, you know, keep that in the back of our mind. Um, but I I don't believe, you know, that this is you know, something that I oppose.
And just to add, the target date is early October, but if we're not ready, then obviously we wouldn't have it. And I'd like to share that the city of Lafayette is going to do this. Um, I just learned. They're going to do this. They're going to lead it, City of Lafayette with the Chamber. They're doing their housing element, schools, service groups, and they're going to do it in June. So, you know, I I know they have more resource than us and staff. I get that and all that, but just to share.
Yeah, and and just, I mean, I think this is a great idea. I'm really glad there are service organizations and community groups that are going to to do this. Um, uh, and I expect that that the town, as it does with so many things, most recently the Butterfly Garden, but there's, there's a whole long list of projects that service organizations have undertaken that the town has, I mean, what do we provide? Two hundred hours of um time of public works to help with the butterfly enclosure in the, in Ranch Laguna Park and that, I mean, we just did that. So um, I I think it's a great idea and I and I support the groups who do it. And to the extent the town can help, that's great. But given the uncertainty, uh, I I'm, I am not sure it should be on on the list of of goals, but just on the list of things that we we do in the ordinary course.
So you would support it? You would support the town participating but not making it a goal?
I would, and I would support a discussion down, you know, at the appropriate point about what the town's participation will consist of. But I'm not going to talk, we can't talk about that right now.
And these are Tom Uckles. I.
There's Denise.
These, there's a chicken and an egg here and at some point we either have to go forward or just say forget it.
Cynthia.
I just want to share that we always participate. Any community group that comes to us with an idea, we partner with them. And as um the the mayor said, uh, we donate time, we donate funding and um we always want to partner. I just, uh, I was on a conversation with the um Maragami Community Foundation Board this morning about uh the restroom. Um, so we have Boy Scout groups. There's numerous examples all the time of projects that we uh partner with the community on. So we're not, we don't, we don't say no. But we're not usually the leader or the organizer. We're a kind of collaborator.
Which is what's suggested.
Okay, how um can I, how many, again, straw poll, we're not, we're not voting tonight. Um, how many um council members would like to put this on the goals?
I'm just sort of on, I just, can I just ask a question about it? Um, yeah, it just seems like if this is something we plan to commit to doing in the regular course of, you know, an ongoing, regular course of business, of town business, which is like what I like to hear. And then, you know, does it need to be added to this as something that we like, you know, need to check the box on and potentially can't check the box on if we can't get to it? So um, I really, I really, really want to participate in something like this and I like this. Um, I'm just thinking about this list as like a checklist, so to speak, and maybe we can't get to it.
And also, as as I said in my opening comments, and just because it's not on the goals, doesn't mean we're not going to do it.
Mm hmm.
Steve.
You know, community day this year in Maraga may be small. There's no reason we can't do it though. So I I I advocate keeping it as a goal. And if we don't meet it, we don't meet it. That's okay.
I mean, if we're going to do it anyway, why not make it a goal?
Well.
All right. So the proposed, so the proposal is participate in. Uh, does Maraga Community Service Day, Mike, exist? Is that a thing? Is this been named?
Named in Walnut Creek and um Pleasant Hill. Lafayette is going to use the the name Lafayette together.
But what is Maraga going to use?
Uh, well, this, but it's open for, you know, open for modification, but right now that's sort of the working title.
What about saying something, participate in a Maraga Community Service Day, working with other community groups? Without na, without making an official title.
Sure, absolutely.
Would that be agreeable to the group? Teresa.
Thank you. I've got a question. Um, so you said uh working along with other towns. Is is that accurate?
Uh, community groups, not towns.
Community groups. Okay, thank you. I miss, I misheard that.
All right. Are we good with that? Cynthia.
So does that mean that Community Service Day isn't capitalized?
No, it's just participate in a, a Maraga Community Service Day, working with other community groups.
Right, so it's not capitalized.
Right, I mean, working with community groups, not other, we're not a community group. So working with community. Mike, is that, is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. All right. Okay, so um there are no other additions, correct? All right, uh, I promised to open to public. Yes, Mike.
Yeah, just what I, I didn't have it on my list, but I've been just thinking about, so I thought I'd verbalize it. So last year, we had um some issues with noise at Wedgewood. So when I'm thinking about priorities in our community, all right. So now, um, excuse me, um, we had noise issues when we were doing the weddings at Hacienda. Now we have Wedgewood, okay? And we're assuming, hey, they know how to do this, no problem. Should there be a goal since it was an issue last year, which is what I think priorities address, that something to effect that we will monitor and manage um the noise issues at Hacienda with Wedgewood in partnership with Wedgewood, just to acknowledge that um there was an issue and we're going to be, you know, working with them to make sure there's not an issue going forward. I was just wondering out loud if that should be um on our goal list or not.
Steve.
I think it's already covered in the goal. Uh, says maintain and improve public safety for all with high quality police and emergency response services. We're gonna, we are gonna monitor the noise and to uh lesser and greater extent, that will fall under the realm of the police. I don't know that we need to call it out specifically, Mike.
Okay, that's fine. I I I didn't make that connection.
I I I was wondering the same thing earlier, you know, because it it is uh had a lot of attention, a lot of focuses here last year. So uh, yeah.
And and I think as this council has expressed on numerous occasions, we're, 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 we're paying attention to 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 that. Um, and Teresa.
Thank you. I just wanted to add my comment too. That was one of the things on my list that I talked to our town manager about. And we had a lengthy conversation about it. So none of us have forgotten that. And I think we will, we will be listening.
And hopefully hearing nothing. Okay, thank you. Um, all right. So um, let me just one last uh chance for public comment. Um, Kendall.
Sorry, okay, there we go. Thank you. Renata, thank you for that comment about paying attention. That's all I'm doing. That's all I'm doing. So on the Wedgewood, Wedgewood issue, going backwards, I'm going backwards from your comment to the beginning. On the Wedgewood issue, I wish all the town council members would recognize that I, yes, I am a lifelong resident. Here's the simple answer to the Hacienda. Don't use any amplified music. There was never any amplified music ever used in the Hacienda when I first lived here. By the way, my wedding was there. We did use amplified music and I apologize to everybody locally that I did do that, but that's the answer. So I just want to say, um, there is a problem with a lack of communication. You guys are all talking about things right now. And you, you are talking among yourselves. And I have said this before, I'm going to say it again. Maraga suffers from a lack of communication. You all say, oh, we're going to communicate with the town and the community on in normal ways. No, you Cynthia has completely failed us. The town staff has failed us because they don't communicate. And the town council has failed us because they don't talk with the community. You're talking amongst yourselves tonight. Um, so Renata, by the way, you set up a vote tonight. And then you asked for a vote and then uh the town attorney had to say, no, 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 you can't have a vote. We're doing this, we're doing that. And then you're asking for thumbs up. These thumbs up things that you're doing. This does not work like in Robert's Rules and normal legal things that happen in town councils. So I don't think these thumbs up approvals were. As far as your guys' goals, what you're trying to create, I would say to you this, that I deal with the minority communities. And what you're saying, uh, what you're talking about are like very sterile approaches. We need to be directly approaching our closest neighbor is really Oakland. And we need to directly communicate with that community. And you guys are saying, well, let's have this like, you know, festival about abuse or or poverty or or race in in problems. No, we need to really talk with people. And I don't hear you guys talking about that. I, you, 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 so you say, well, Walnut Creek is doing this little reach out here, reach out there. No, I really think that you guys need to rethink. Don't go with false goals.
We, we need. It's your time's up, if you don't mind wrapping up.
Okay, so I just would ask you for, unlike on the minority communities that are over our hill, we really do need to connect with them. I've lived here my whole life. I'm asking you really truthfully right now. Come on, I'm saying we really need to communicate with them and connect with them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kendall. All right. And then before we leave this item, I just, just want to Denise, just, just to make sure that we're all clear, have what's going to go down. So we did not adopt these goals tonight formally. We have um through the thumbs up vote indicated what we would like to see placed on the consent agenda for approval at our next meeting. And there will be therefore one more opportunity for public comment in connection with with that approval. Do I have that right?
That's correct. The town council did not vote on on the goals as a whole tonight. Um, they each sort of gave their opinion and and the straw poll was taken to see what the majority, um, which way the majority was leaning. And so the, this item will be brought back at the next agenda uh for a formal vote.
At which point we can talk about semicolons and commas, Mike.
And of of course, at that point, council can make, you know, if if it's on consent, council can pull the item and make further changes. And of course, the public can comment on it.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. All right. Uh, next agenda item ordinances, resolution, request for actions, ten B, new classification, senior accountant. Cynthia, do you have a staff reporter or um?
I do.
Annie?
I I have the staff report. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so I have to tell you, I was like really kind of proud of the work that we did in terms of succession planning for Norm's departure. We, um, I had negotiated with Norm prior to his departure that he stay a few months longer so that he could train our accountant and they would have a full year of experience knowing what happened at each time of the year because we go from budget to audit to single audit to state controllers report, et cetera. Um, but you know, uh, well laid plan uh doesn't always work and um Annie came in on January third. She's trained. She's had been a finance director at multiple other agencies and we were thrilled. And then unfortunately, the vulnerability of our organization due to our small staff really was revealed because we um received letters of resignation from our full-time accountant and our part-time accounting technician. So what that means is right now, we, we, I have to tell you, we're in crisis, but we don't have accounting staff and we have a brand new. Um, we have a brand new director who doesn't fully under uh understand the systems. Um, and there's no one available to help us, none of the temp or temporary agencies. We are in the middle of a great resignation and we can't find an accountant. And one of the reasons why this is sort of problematic is that the pro, the hiring process really takes us two, two months. We post the job, panel interviews, individual interviews, backgrounds, then they accept it, then they have to give notice somewhere. So um, and as you know, we're starting the budget preparation process right now. And I don't know how you do that without having accountants, uh, let alone doing our journal entries. So just perspective wise, so that's kind of where we are right. So we, I planned, I really tried and bam, it all fell apart, house cards. So but I just want to say perspective wise, that's since I stepped in the door four years ago, I have heard constant requests to upgrade the accountant position to a senior accountant. And because it reflects the needs of the organization and the desire to attract and retain staff. And at this point in time, it has risen to a priority. Um, the fact that we've now hired two accountants without municipal's experience, we've trained them on the job and then they've left after a year or less for a higher level job that paid more is what made me reconsider this request. So what I did with that is I really looked to evaluate kind of what I wanted to start with, like, what are the appropriate staffing levels and classification needs of the administrative services department? So working with the ten cities that the town considers comparable, and these are based on population, staff, budget, the types of services offered, the location of the jurisdiction. We surveyed the cities and I'm just gonna, I'll share real quick. I don't have a lot to, okay, hold on a second. Let me figure out how to do this. Um, where is it? Okay. Um, I surveyed the cities and um here are the numbers that we got for staffing levels. So of the ten comparable cities, Maraga has the lowest. We have three point five in, three point four five employees. So the next city has four, four point two fives, et cetera. So um, and some of the cities, I think Hercules is actually really similar size and they have six positions. So um, that led me to, uh, I, hold on a second, let me find my notes. Um, so it's important to note that we all produce the same documents. We all do operating budgets. We all do capital improvement programs, budget. We do the audited financial statements. We process payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable. We manage all the functions of the towns. So, but we have fewer people to perform that range of responsibilities and and that's, that's problematic. Um, and it's also, Maraga's in a unique situation because our employees, because there's so few of them, they actually need to provision, be proficient and not. They actually need to provision, be proficient and knowledgeable and kind of all aspects of accounting and government feedback. Because it's not a big team. So there's needs to, that it really takes a special person. So further analysis of the classification of the employees of these small agencies. Cuz I wanted to dig deeper. Okay, so we have fewer employees. But what of those employees? Because there's this question about whether this position should be upgraded. But it revealed that Maraga not only has fewer employees, but that the employees are, are at a lower level. And so this pushes a lot of the responsibility onto the director. But it's also made our accountant position um less desirable. Um, because they don't get the title and they don't get the money. So um, let me see if I can pull this. Oh, it's not for, I wanted to pull up this quick comparison. Sorry, I'm having to toggle a lot. So the next slide here. Shows you this comparison. So what we, I did is I took those. Other four agencies that have five or fewer employees. And I said, well, what level of employees do they have? Cuz that's kind of addresses this issue of upgrading that position. And as you can see, cuz I drew a line above the accountant, all the other agencies have two or three employees at a higher level than Maraga. With most, with most of them having uh a. HR and manager or administrator and a, and a director or an assistant director. So it's, so the only other agency with a senior accountant also has an HR manager and a um admin services director. So. So I provided this to you in your report, but I wanted, I also wanted to know, what does that actually mean? So the calculation below is the estimated monthly cost for administrative services that these other departments spend. And this assumes that all the positions are filled at top step. And as you can see, Maraga spends a lot less on our administrative for services functions. Well, interestingly, we also don't hire consultants to do things. So we've done, all the other agencies are spending forty thousand dollars every time they hire a director. We did a recruitment. Free, in-house. Other agencies like Lafayette, they're paying somebody for their CARES Act funding. They brought in a consultant to deal with their CARES Act funding. They brought in a consultant to deal with their ARPA funding. They're spending over two hundred thousand dollars on a consultant for their ARPA funding. We do it all in-house. We are lean and we are um really, really struggling. So. Um. Okay, hold on a second. So. I think that kind of where, what I concluded is that, you know, there could be some additional analysis. That would result in a recommendation to increase the number of full-time in employees and the positions. But at this point in time, really all uh we're recommending is a new classification of senior accountant. To be filled in lieu of the accountant. And this position reflects the level of responsibility needed to fulfill the duties. And it is at the level that should assist the town in attracting and retaining a qualified accountant. So the senior accountant would be responsible for the full range of complex financial and accounting responsibilities. And they'd supervise the part-time accounting technician once someone is hired. So kind of moving on, we went and I looked at a compensation study of the ten comparable cities. Um, and uh determined that the accounting position was within, the salary was in one percent. Of the uh median of the comparable cities. Um, it's one percent lower, but it was still within one percent, which I think is good. Um, and then similar to the engineering and planning series, staff is recommending that we use this market differential. To apply to the relationship between the accountant and the senior accountant. So the engineering differential between the associate and the senior is twenty percent and the planning differential is fifteen percent. And I think it's another twenty percent then between the senior and the principal planner. So of the, our comparable cities, four of those comparable cities have accounting, senior accountant positions. And interesting, of those four that have them, all of them have their senior accountant positions filled. And none of them have their accounting, accountant positions filled. Um, and the median senior accountant position salary is nineteen percent higher than Maraga's accounting position. Accountant position salary. So we're recommending a twenty percent. Salary differential between the accountant and the senior accountant and the projected fiscal impact. And this depends upon kind of the placement in the gr- range and then the cost of benefits is approximately. Twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars annually. So there's no, there would be, be no projected impact to this year's budget. Cuz we're having savings because we don't have anybody in that position now. However, there would be um an impact in future years. So I'm here to answer questions, but before you tonight is a resolution that would do a couple of things. It would approve a new senior planner job description. It would add the senior, my senior plan, senior accountant job description, sorry. It would add the senior accountant salary range to the salary schedule effective February first. And it would mend the resolution that the town has with the mid-management professional employees association to add the position. Thank you for your time and I'm here for questions.
Thank you Cynthia. Questions of, we'll do questions from council, then we'll do public comment and then we'll bring it back for discussion. Any questions of Cynthia? Mike?
Could you call up your um peer um. Uh, towns on page two.
On the slide two?
Yes, uh, well, I don't, I'm looking at the staff report too.
Okay, I can't pull up the staff report. I can.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, you had the first one you had with the towns and the FTEs.
Yeah.
Uh, there you go. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, no, very good. So um. Looking at those, six out of the ten towns excluding Maraga. Are more than fifty percent larger and there's two that are double. And I understand in the world of these responsibilities, you have fixed costs and you have variable cost. And Emeryville is very different. Which is like wall-to-wall retail and office. So, you know, I, I, I do wonder about this and it's interesting. These, look at the scale difference. Those towns on the left are the ones that are significantly larger than the towns on the right and you see a difference in FTE. So um, you know, that, that, doesn't that sort of beg a question? And we've talked about this on comp studies. So a- again, you put it up. I don't need to go deep here, but I just wanted to point that out. Is that true?
Um, as I mentioned, Hercules is about the same size as Maraga and they have six employees doing these function, completing these.
It's more than fifty percent bigger than population, but you know, okay, let's move on. Um, the next item was um. Let's see, the, the exhibit you had where you showed the five towns which are closer to us. Uh, and you showed the, the different titles. Do you have that one handy? You know what I mean? I think it was the second or third one. That one right there. Okay, so for example, you know, so you know, I know Lafayette a little bit and I'm, I'm looking at, you know, some of those comparisons, you know. Pinole has a um HR director. I don't know why they have an HR director, but you know, that seems to be the outlier there. But you, you're, your point's well taken. There's some additional admin at the top. But for example, I was looking at Lafayette. Now, are you aware that um those two um admin directors and assistant directors? They also have responsibility for the county clerk and another person. And when I look at Lafayette. That might be the justification for having a little bit more. And when I look below the line, we have two and a half, they have two. So Lafayette a town which, you know, is also significantly larger. You know, I don't see really that much of a difference. So uh, I, I guess my question is, I'm not sure this really answers the question of trying to find the accountant. And when I see the accountant's salary within one percent of other towns. Isn't the real issue that we're sort of in this bubble of demand for staff, salaries are up? And we're just having trouble getting an accountant for the salary that is comparable with others. Is that fair?
Uh, no, I would disagree. Um, I believe that the responsibilities that we're asking the accountant to do. Are at a senior accountant level. I mean, they're, they're. They handle uh the day-to-day operations and functions of the, the town in terms of accounting. And then the director that handles all the kind of reporting and projects.
And I believe it was two years ago, we added the half per, we added additional staff in accounting. We added that half person. In the accountant assistant technician role?
Yes, we did because prior to that, the books were balanced on an annual basis. So adding the ha, the not even half-time accounting technician enabled us to close our books. And it has given us a better understanding about. How, how, how our town runs and where our money is. And I think that the town has definitely benefited. In terms of being able to be strategic and make great decisions because we actually know where our money is.
No more questions?
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Steve? You're on mute, Steve.
Thank you. Have we, have we um considered retention bonuses? Try and, try and that because seems like, as you say, we're, we're in the great uh resignation. And um, is that a way to uh? Hang on to good people? Has that been considered?
That's council policy and that could be dis, that could be discussed. I mean.
But is it, it hasn't been considered yet? I take it.
Uh, no, but negotiations are coming up, so we'll be talking about it soon and you'll be, you know, able to decide.
Sort of rolls into my next question. And that is, if we, if we are successful hiring someone at. The proposed salary, uh, how will salary action be handled later this spring? It will, they'll, they'll, they'll come on board and then get an immediate raise?
Um, well, yeah, but they come on board at a, at, you know. On a, at a step, at the beginning of, of the range. So if that range moves up, then they would get that adjustment. But they, yeah.
Okay.
And then, and, and I'll, just so you know, all municipal employees are aware of this. They know what the salary is. They know when the cost of living adjustments happen. And they're happening at all the other jurisdictions as well. So it's happening at their job.
I see. Great. Do you expect, you know, since we're raising the level of this position and, you know, previous accountants that we brought on board. Did not have government experience. So as you, I think as you communicated, um, and, and I, I. Town managers was very kind to spend quite a bit of time with me yesterday on, on this. And they did not have government experience. Do you expect that the, the candidate pool for this position will uh include people with government experience? Unless they will have a, a steeper learning curve? Are we gonna benefit from that?
Yes, and I can tell you that Annie too, our administrative services director has reached out far and wide. To try and attract people to the town of Maraga. And the title and the salary have been um, have been uh hurdles. So um, I think she's, she's assured me that we're gonna get qualified candidates if, if this job.
We go, if we go with the, the higher level.
Yes, um.
Andy, did you wanna say something?
Yes. Sorry, uh Cynthia is absolutely right. I've tried to poach other really good accountants from other cities. And tried to attract them to Maraga and they pretty much told me thanks, but no thanks. The salary is too low for them to come.
Okay. And.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, and we're confident that. That I, that poses the question, are we conf- confident? That outsourcing is not an option for, for this, even short term until we can. You know, yeah, get, get, get on firmer ground at least.
You know, we, there was one temporary agency, or there's a temporary agency that had somebody with municipal accounting experience. Who'd worked for us in the past, but they're working for Concord now. There's nobody else with municipal experience. And certainly nobody who could come in and look at our real basic fundamental system. And then we do everything by exporting to Excel and creating these special worksheets for our budget. So that's not something that you can. Contract out. I mean, I've worked on the budget for multiple years. I worked on it the first year alone. I worked on it the second year for. With Norm. I know the budget. Annie brings experience with her. We're gonna figure it out. We need an account, accountant to partner with. But I don't even know what would happen if you threw it to other people. They'd go, what? You have a capital improvement fund and you have to track this year? And you know, it's, it's just very specific to Maraga.
Uh, uh, thank you. That's, those are my questions.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice if we could cuz then I wouldn't have to worry about it. That would be great. Cuz I'm concerned.
Any other council member questions? Um, I, I have Cynthia, I, I, just so I'm, I'm clear, so. So this, the, the senior accountant position would be in lieu of the accountant position, right?
Correct. We would hire it and lose. So they'd both be on the books.
They'd be on the.
I know, they, the both positions would exist, but only one would be funded.
But, but only one is funded. So this isn't a increase in FTEs?
No.
Okay, and are we? So we would have, so the, the scenario you're proposing is. Admin services director, senior accountant, accounting tech and accounting assistant? Is that?
Um, well, it's, it's actually an administrative services technician and a accounting technician.
Okay.
Yes, part-time.
Are those two positions vacant too?
The part-time accounting technician is vacant. So that's why we are. Not in a good place.
That's why what?
We're not in a good place.
Okay, and are we, are we working on filling that?
As fast as we can. Uh, we've received some applications. We're doing some interviews on Friday, so.
Okay, and um, just kind of related to Steve's outsourcing questions. Is borrowing someone from Lafayette or Arinda an option?
Nobody has anybody. Everybody's desperate. I mean, I'm like, do you have a plan? There are people, do you have a planning manager? Do you have a finance director? Do you have a building director? Yeah, so no, there's, nobody has any staff. That's why when we made an offer to the principal planner. The city manager of a pretty large city came down and talked to him and said, we need you to stay. Here's what I can give you. So.
This situation reminds me of um what we did in engineering. Is that right? When, when the.
Yes, when we couldn't, when we couldn't hire, we did two full rounds of recruitment and we didn't get anybody. So we went and we had to look at the salaries for the position and we've been successful. I would say. Engineering is doing great. Sean's doing a great job. He attracted and hired and has retained really qualified skilled engineers. And they're making things happen.
All right, any other questions of Cynthia? All right, let's close. Oh, Mike?
Yeah, I just, are, are you using any type of um recruiting firms at all or just trying to do this on your own?
Uh, no, so um, we're not using anybody. Um, I don't know that people that use recruiting firms. For this level of a position they do for management positions. And as I indicated, it's a forty thousand dollar cost. And I'm not convinced that they get anybody different than what we get from opening the job. They just have somebody manage the process for them.
I mean, like, uh, uh, okay, I'm sure you, you've tou- touched account temps and all those people, right?
Account tense doesn't do that kind of, they don't have any municipal people. They don't have any municipal experience, so.
Right now we have zero, so I was thinking it could be helpful to get somebody.
Oh, yeah, no, we've talked to account, account tense. They just. Oh, yeah, no, we've talked to account account tense, they just have anybody.
Okay.
We got our current administrative services technician through account temps.
Okay.
So it's definitely a, um, you know, venue that we use, it's just they don't have anybody right now.
Okay.
Um, and if I if I may just ask one more question, Annie, if I may ask you, are are you. If if we approve this, do you do you feel better about going back to those people and actually having a chance of success?
Yes, I I believe I can poach somebody from my former city, um, he is.
This is a public meeting.
So I I I think there will be more success when we reclassified to senior accountant.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further questions? All right, thank you, everyone, um, I'll open it for public comment, Kendall?
Yes, Annie, uh, if you want an accountant that wants to do this job, I will find them. I will have them tomorrow and they will not be a. A, they will be an outsourced group and they will solve all your problems. The town council, how dare you consider this? The, you're talking about including more costs to our town. And Cindy, there is no comparable city to Maraga, how dare you compare us? The way you did in these presentations, Cynthia compared Maraga to Hercules. No. We are not Hercules. And Cindy is trying to create a bigger town staff. This is unacceptable. This town is not able to accept additional costs, this is not acceptable Cindy, you cannot create this anymore. Um, so. The. False information Cindy presented tonight on those. Slides are practices and deception. And we need to kind of rethink our approach here. Maraga cannot continue to add staff. We need to eliminate staff, we need to eliminate rec- park and recreation staff there, they they, you just gave away the the. Pussy and I don't wanna go into like explanations. I wanna talk about what we just talked about tonight. How dare you consider additional costs to this town? The accounting of this town should be the responsibility of Cindy, she's the town manager, we pay her a lot of money. We pay her to do what she's asking now for us to bring on additional staff to do. No, Maraga is supposed to be a minimalized community as far as government. I was here in the nineteen seventy four incorporation. We are supposed to be minimalized, Cindy is trying to maximize. No, we need to stop now, the town council, how dare you even consider conversation on this? You need to stop Cindy and say, no, Cindy, we need to reduce costs, and by the way. Her accounting problem is her problem, she needs to be the accountant, she needs to consolidate, not to expand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kendall. All right, I don't see any other raised hands, so close public comment. Uh, and open for council discussion. Who would like to kick it off? Sona.
Uh, it's really, it's really tough with this great resignation problem and thank you for outlining it. In a way that we could see some of the comparisons, so my understanding is that we are not adding. An FTE, we're not adding staff, we are raising the experience level and the salary, the title. So that we can actually get a better person to do better quality work. And I like the idea that Steve mentioned that, you know, retention bonuses, what more? On a go-forward basis, um, can we think about that other towns are thinking about too? So for me, um, I I just think that this is a reflection of a changing work dynamic. That lots of organizations are experiencing right now and we have to do what we could need to do to evolve and adapt. I think that hearing Annie's vote of confidence that, you know, she can get more positive traction. Um, and you know, being in the field and actually already talking to people, that was a very good data point. To better understand the need for this.
Thank you, Sona. Other comments? Teresa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, you know, as council members and residents of this town. We expect the town to be run professionally and. The town staff has needs tools. And as a council member, I am in favor of supporting our staff. With the tools that they have acknowledged that they need. So I thank them and I'm hoping Annie can invite some of her people that she's talked to in the past. To come and take a look at Maraga, thank you.
Steve? You're on mute, Steve.
Need to look up before I look down, um, I apologize. So, uh, from a tactical standpoint, well, first of all, my interpretation. Uh, we need accounting, I've asked the questions about outsourcing, about temporary. And, um. You know, I I don't have the the authority to go out and check myself, so I've gotta take what I am told at face value. So we do need to address this issue. And I appreciate the work that the town staff has done to present this so that we can act on it. Uh, I I have to admit, um. I I do not think that all of the nine cities that were listed as being comparable are in fact comparable. Uh, but maybe those four or five at the at the one and are more comparable. I I sometimes wonder that whether we shouldn't be really comparing ourselves with cities in in the foothills. Or towns in the foothills which are actually more comparable from a size standpoint, uh, be it that doesn't. Doesn't match the salary comparisons. Uh, from a tactical standpoint, um. I profess that in looking at the job descriptions, and I looked at the job description. For the administrative services director and then for the senior accountant and the accountant. And I'm I've I have real problems rationalizing the three of them. Uh, my observations are that a couple of the duties from the administrative services director have been shifted to the senior accountant. And I I can't, I can't find correlation between the duties of the accountant and. And and the duties of the senior accountant, there's some, there's some correlation I can find, but not. Not, it doesn't, it doesn't dovetail very well at all. And I, and my point is, if we bring someone on as the senior accountant, they're gonna be doing the duties of both. The senior accountant and and that accountant. And so I would expect that the duties of the accountant would. Fold into the duties of the senior accountant, I I I would expect, in unless you don't educate me, I guess, but. But I would expect that. The the duties of the senior count ought to be sort of stated, the duties of this of the accountant, you know, are included. And here are the extra extra duties and you ought to be able to, you know, summarize a lot of these duties into ten or fifteen. Critical things, um, cuz it's it's really hard to to comprehend what everything is. That that there need to do, whether it be monthly or or once every six months, once a year. And I'm I'm loathe to request you to do more work, but I I really think there there needs to be clarity developed. On really. How this is gonna work of, you know, and I understand the desire to bring on someone at a senior level. So you can hire someone. Even if they're gonna do some of the duties of the the accountant level, but there there has to be. A good definition of what those duties are, and I'm not seeing it. And with regard to the senior accountant being a supervisor. I I think that the the that that has to be changed to that the that may, there may be supervisory duties. Because we're, you know, it's an organization of three and a half employees. And it doesn't make sense that you've got two supervisors for three and a half employees. That's that's tactical, that's down in the details, um, more strategic. You know, I'm gonna vote that that we bring someone on board, but you know, I I'm gonna do it very reluctantly. Cuz I I don't think it's a really good solution and I I don't, I don't say that in a critical manner, it's just the situation. Uh, it's a situation that no one likes. I strategically though, uh, if we have another entity in town that has spare capacity. To do special projects, I would hope that that person could take a look at. Our tasks in in this area and find out and try to identify and do the research, what can be automated? And what can be deleted, how can we economize? I just in in doing a quick search on the internet, there there are lots of companies that advertise. If they can ever, they can automate automate your your accounting systems. Some of them are big, I'm sure, some of them are for smaller entities in smaller towns. And I know we have access to a database or a a, um. Network of towns and can we go out and ask those towns if there are towns that are using canned software programs within California? Cuz I I gotta tell you, it it bothers me when I say, when I see that we're out, we're we're moving things over into Excel. Worksheets. And to me, that means a lot of manual work and a lot of customized work. That if we could use a canned automated program, that would be the way to go. I understand that's, so I I I put that more on the strategic side, you know, let's think about it. And then finally, um, metrics for resource loading purposes. We 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 bring people on board without. The the kind of hard metrics that I like to see, and and I've I've supported it so far and I'm gonna vote for it tonight. But, um, you know, and then there's the the note in the in the report about potentially recommending an additional full-time employee. I that's got, in my mind, at least for the time I'm still in the town council, that's gotta be a last resort. And and gotta be substantiated by by, you know, really hard. Metrics that substantiate such, I I don't know that, you know, I'm not, I'm not the one to do the analysis. To to establish it, but I need the information so I can make a good decision. And and, you know, the soft, you know, soft art, uh, uh, information that I have, I have problems with it. I I know my message is not necessarily a easy one to accept, I I apologize for that. Annie, thank you for your support.
Mike, do you have any comments?
Uh, yeah, I I forgot to mention, um, we do have one candidate in the pipeline for the accounting slot. Um, you know, I I I forget where you told me Cindy where that is, but there is one in the pipeline, is that true?
There is one candidate candidate who meets the minimum qualifications.
Okay, all right, um, which I I understand isn't the only way to look at it. First, I I I sure do with my background, understand the difficulty you're in, you know, I I I always make the reference to we're a small business. And we're a small business with a limited number of people, you wear a number of different hats, so Annie, I'm glad you're here. Let's start with that and Cynthia, I'm glad you're here, um, so it's tough. And when I heard both of our accountants left, it made me really nervous, so please take care of things. I know you will, the issue at hand, um, everybody I talked to, everyone is having trouble getting staff. Right, and that sort of leads to, well, you know, the the price you pay goes high. So, you know, I heard the, um, you know, well, it's really a senior accountant role and it's not an accountant role. Um, okay, but I think what's the fact that our salaries are within one percent of peer companies. But we can't get anybody is that short-term pressure we're feeling on getting any, somebody in the house? So I I do think we're in a short-term bubble. And I'm concerned that we would spend twenty-two thousand, which after ten years will be two hundred and twenty thousand. To deal with this short-term bubble. I'm sympathetic to the situation that we're in trying to find somebody in order to to get things done. Um, I'll also say that, you know, for, you know, what, over forty years, we didn't have the half technicians. So, you know, we had one accountant at the end of the day and closed the books. But you could say, well, did you really have the information you had, so I understand that point of view. And in a time of unfunded needs, you know, so we don't have a plan for it, so it always comes up, you know, we're in a structural deficit. That's part of the equation, the other thing is, this is not the first time that staff has asked us for an upgrade. Um, the planning department, the engineering department, um, so there's been several requests to upgrade. And, you know, there's limits on that. So, in my opinion, the the difference between a senior accountant and an accountant to me is not that great. They're both mid-level professionals, I really think the problem is, we can't find anybody for the accountant salary. So we need to go to the senior accountant, um, so I don't know what the answer is. But I'd like to make a suggestion that we take thirty or sixty days, keep looking for the accountant. And let's see what we can find, a- and the idea that the staffing analysis, what what I said three years ago, I'll say again. You know, this is sort of, you know, superficial information, the best way to to see what do we really need in this town? Bring in somebody, a firm or people that do process reengineering, they're efficiency experts. And and they don't need to look at other towns, they look at Maraga, here's what you do, here's a more efficient way to do what you do. Looking at workflows and looking at, you know, connecting things, um, making improvements and how work gets done. And that analysis, if that analysis said we need to more add more staff, I'll sign up. And if that analysis says we can save two people, I'll sign up, so I'll be willing to invest in that. But just, uh, you know, we need more. Can't do that, and I'm gonna suggest we we keep, we keep looking, and I know it's hard, so you have my sympathies.
Thank you, Mike, um. I, you know, I think there's been a lot of really good stuff said here today, um, I think the reality is that. That we are, that we are in crisis mode, um, we have a recommendation to, and and this isn't. This is like a core department, this is, this is our books and records, this is our finances and we're going into budget season. So, um, I I hear you, Mike, but I don't think we have the luxury of of waiting thirty, sixty days. And it also sounds to me like from a quality of work perspective. Doing a little bit of a step up from accountant to senior accountant will be beneficial to the department. And the then and increasing the likelihood that we'll get someone with municipal experience. Is is, I think, worth twenty thousand dollars, because I think that will pay for itself very quickly. So, um, not, you know, again, I I I feel like I'm doing this under duress. But I think we have an issue that needs to be solved right now. And so I'm in, I'm in favor of of the proposal, but I also echo, um, the comments made by. My fellow council members about, you know, continuing to look at ways in which we can streamline, improve. and figure out a way that we don't have to transfer stuff onto Excel spreadsheets. So anyway, that's where I am. So would anyone like to make a motion? Steve? You're on mute.
I'm consistent. Okay, I move for approving the senior accountant job description, adding the senior accountant salary range to the fiscal year 2021-22 salary schedule, effective February 1, 2022, and amending resolution 32-2019 to include the senior accountant classification in the compensation package for mid-management professional employees, effective February 1, 2022.
All right, motion by Vice Mayor Wolukie, second by Councilmember Onoda. All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarification, this is approval of the resolution set forth in the package, correct?
That is my understanding, is that right, Steve?
That is correct. I take that, I accept that clarification.
Thank you.
The second or accept that clarification, Teresa? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll take roll call vote. Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda?
Yes.
Councilmember McClure?
No.
Vice Mayor Wolukie?
Yes, with the understanding that there'll be work done on those descriptions.
And Mayor Sauce is a yes, it passes four to one. Thank you, everybody. Go get them, Annie.
Good luck, Annie.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening. I really appreciate this.
You as well. Okay, next agenda item, discussion items, there are none. Number 12, council requests for future agenda items. Any council members have requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, there are no communications.
Yes.
And I have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Teresa, do you have a communication?
Well, it's not, I would like to communicate. I would like to wish everyone a happy Chinese New Year, which is February 1st.
Thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Appreciate that. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember McClure, second by Vice Mayor Wolukie. Roll call vote. Councilmember Macker?
Yes.
Councilmember Onoda?
Yes, good meeting tonight, everyone.
Councilmember McClure?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Wolukie?
Yes.
And Sauce is a yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your engagement.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.